Regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August 9, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
This evening, we have the invocation by Reverend Christina Greis, Chaplain of Advent Health, and after the invocation, we will stand and salute the flag as a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Please bow our heads for our opening prayer. Dear heavenly Father, first I want to thank you for these men and women who have dedicated their lives to serve this community, to serve this city. I pray that you bless the work of their hands, that you guide them as they tackle challenges. God, I pray also your blessing upon their personal lives and their families. And now, as they begin this meeting, I just pray that your Spirit will guide them, that you'll be here present, and that your wisdom will prevail. As I pray in your loving name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Started, I've got one announcement. All of item 22 concerning the new car wash and the existing billboard sign at the northwest corner of Klosterman Road in US 19, specifically applications 22-170 and 22-168 have been deferred to the meeting of August 23. We have 23 items this evening, so it's going to get actually 22 now, but the estimated adjournment is 10:55, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. What we're going to do is have a special presentation right now. Claire, if you and your parents and Mr. Pinello can come forward. If I can have the entire commission and charter officials come up forward, please. You two, Tom. There's room for everybody. This is a very special presentation. You discover these little treasures every now and then in Tarpon Springs, and Claire Bowie is a special treasure that not many people, as far as, I know a lot of things, and I usually know what goes on around town, but this one was something that I didn't know about until it was explained to me by Mr. Pinello of the Bowley Center, where Claire volunteers for community service. We've got a certificate of recognition this evening to present to Claire, and let me just read that before we get into a few other comments. "The Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida hereby present this certificate in special recognition for excellence in wrestling and scholastic achievement to Claire Bowie." Claire is the daughter of Keith and Jerry Bowie, standing right behind her. Claire, in her accomplishments, is the 2022 Fargo Junior National Champion. She's the 2022 and 2021 Florida High School Girl State Wrestling Champion. Her record is 31 and 0. That's outstanding. She's ranked in the top 10. She's ranked in the top 10 in the country for weight class. And her great GPA, as far as a parent, this would be one of my better parts, her GPA is a 4.3. And she's also been accepted to Wyoming Cemetery Seminary in Pennsylvania, and witness whereof of this certificate is presented by direction of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida this ninth day of August 2022. Let me present this to you.
Way to go, girl.
In addition, you live here in Tarpon Springs, so you're automatically a sponger, but we'd like to give you this small memento that you can carry with you wherever you go in your future travels, at least to remember where your hometown has been. So, here you go.
Thank you.
I'll get that to your mom and dad if you can. I think we wish you all success in the world. Everybody that is, I won't say our staff is very significant, but we've got all our charter officials, our commissioners are up here. Mr. Pinello, the Bowley Center is up here. That's it. So, we all wish you greatest success. And does any commissioner, vice mayor, anybody would like to make any comments?
Just congratulations, Karen. Job well done.
All right. Claire, thank you very much, and your parents, I'm sure are proud of you. We are all proud of you. And just remember Tarpon Springs when you travel, so, okay. We can all squeeze together. You mean like we like each other?
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. Very proud.
Go back. All right, now, we're going to go to public comments. If anyone wishing to make a public comment, please step forward and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live again on Georgia Avenue down in Palm Harbor. I'm here to protest the construction of the roundabout on alternate 19 in Palm Harbor. During the town hall meeting last year, the residents overwhelmingly rejected the proposed development. The fire chief in Palm Harbor also expressed his disapproval of the roundabout, citing that the roundabout serves as a road impediment in that it obstructs emergency vehicles. To my understanding, alternate US Highway 19 is the only designated highway in Florida to have such roundabout development proposed. The roundabout on alternate 19 is not a warranted form of infrastructure, as 90% to 95% of the vehicles travel in a north-to-south direction. Only 5% of the traffic enters the road at right angles, and the location utilizes a standard four-way stop. The roundabout does not serve to decongest our roadways. Such impediment is counterproductive in alleviating our traffic congestion in Pinellas County. Times Square in New York City does not have a roundabout. In comparing big apples with oranges, why should I, why should alternate 19 in Palm Harbor be forced against our will to bear such imposition that ultimately is a misappropriated cost for the residents to bear? The county has appropriated $2.6 million to construct this roundabout that is deliberately intended to impede the efficiency of vehicular travel. In order to alleviate traffic congestion in an effective manner, overpasses on US 19 should have been installed clear through Wikiwachi 25 years ago. Neglecting on not constructing efficient roadways moving forward is unacceptable. Ultimately, I think there's more to this roundabout issue than what legislation is currently disclosing to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I just wanted to clarify a number of things that came up at our previous meeting. I never intend my comments to be personal, whether it's a commissioner, an elected official, whether it's a city employee or a contracted individual. That's not my intent. My intent is the best for the city of Tarpon Springs and the best of the residents of Tarpon Springs. And for several years now, I've been asking this board to please look into the billing practices of our contracted attorneys. And guess what? Somebody finally did it. Just a few weeks into his job, Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Mike Eisner, read the contract, found out that our attorneys were indeed in breach of contract and were overbilling the residents. Now, that could have been done a long time ago by anybody who sat on this dais. For as long as they've been sitting there, they could have looked at that and done something about it. But they did not. Because there was a culture, a culture of just turning a blind eye. So, hopefully, that's going to change. So, thank you, Commissioner Eisner, for doing the right thing, stepping up as a new commissioner, and doing your job, saving the residents untold hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars over the next many years. Now, somebody could sit back and do the math and find out how much could have been done by others if they had stepped up and asked them to stop doing that. By the way, I believe they've agreed to stop bilking the residents in this fashion. So, thank you again for doing the right thing. And I've told people before, you may not like Mike Eisner, but at least you know where you stand with Mike Eisner. He says what he's going to do, and he does what he says. I just wish that I could say that about the rest of you. Well, time will tell. You don't have to worry about hurting somebody's feelings. That's not what this is about. This is city government. You have to do the job. Sometimes that job might hurt somebody's feelings. Putting an RFP, Request for Proposal, to compare how much somebody else will do for how much money should be regularly done. It's not about whether you like the attorneys or don't like the attorneys. It's about how efficient, how much, and how good is the advice, how good is the job. That's what this is about. It's nothing personal at all. I don't even know many of you personally. So, I wouldn't care if you stole from an employer. I don't. If you are employed by someone and you're stealing from them, that's between you and them. But if somebody's taking away money from the residents of Tarpon Springs, that has to be stopped. And that's what I'm speaking out about. And that's all this has been about. And by the way, Mr. Clay Colson's lawsuit against the city still stands, and the city filed a response to his motion. I don't know if you've seen it. You guys should start looking at that stuff. So, you know what's going on. You guys might not be getting told all the facts. Just look into it. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Mr. Trask, would you care to say anything? Invite you to respond if you'd like.
Well, first of all, I think I addressed most of the issues last time. I think that the travel charges were, in fact, warranted and agreed to years ago, but we have decided for those couple of hours a month that we would not be charging travel charges to the city any longer. And I advised the commission on that the following morning, based upon the discussion that was at the last meeting. It is not worth it to me or my firm to be questioned about that or to amend my contract to address it. So, I'm satisfied with the way things have happened.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Dawn Peters, and I am a candidate for Pinellas County Schools, District 3 at large. And hello, Major Trill. I want to thank the commission here at the City of Tarpon Springs for giving us an opportunity to just introduce ourselves and say who we are. I am a mother, and I'm a Florida native. I have two daughters who have attended Pinellas County Schools from kindergarten all the way up until now in high school. I am just here to advocate for our children. I stand for back-to-basics education. And, you know, we really need to be teaching our children to respect our country, say the Pledge of Allegiance every morning. But something that the city commission might be interested in is the school board, we should really be focusing on our trade certification programs that we have for free within our school systems. And I think it will be very important to work with our cities, our school systems, to work with our cities, to find out what the workforce needs are within our individual towns, municipalities, and cities in all of Pinellas County, and promote to the young people within our school systems what the real-world workforce needs are, what the income options are for all those different various positions, and really focus on getting away from the narrative of the four-year college program and focusing on what we need today, right here, within our own communities, and promoting that to the young people within our school system. And that actually benefits everybody, because we do have a lot of amazing free programs already within our school system that will benefit both our young people, our families, and our towns and municipalities here in Pinellas County. So, just a couple of things that I stand for. I'm not going to talk very long. If anybody wants to get more information about me, votedawnpeters.com is my website. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with many of you and speak here today.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Peter Lakkas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Good evening, Board, Honorable Clerk, Mr. Trask, City Attorney, and Major Trill. Tonight's passage, Psalm 33, 1 through 5. "Sing joyfully to the Lord, you righteous; it is fitting for the upright to praise him. Praise the Lord with the harp; make music to him on the ten-string lyre. Sing to him a new song; play skillfully and shout for joy. For the word of the Lord is right and true, and he is faithful in all he does. And the Lord loves righteousness and justice." Righteousness and justice. Seems like a lot of people have different definitions of some of that, and I won't go into all of that now, but you have the ability at your level to do some of those things, and I'm glad to see some of that as being incorporated into the strategic plans and the comp plans. But again, the plan that really matters is what you hear from the residents as to how they want to shape or keep their town. And I know you hear conflicting views, but the development all around is engulfing us, engulfing us. And you are the stewards of our local area. Now, onto a more practical matter. I would like to thank, I'm sure with the cooperation of the police department, the placement of the stop signs at Reed and Grand. Needed, effective. Now, Diddy has control over Distant, South Distant, and I've said this before, those people, part of their problem is the speeding on Distant between Klosterman and Curlew. All you need are basically four stop signs, to it, what is it, Sandy Hollow or Shady Hollow, the first intersection coming up after the hill, and Ivy Lane just before you get to Curlew Place to turn. Very simple to solve. You'll make a lot of people happy. Lastly, that workshop the other day, you know I love meetings. I come to the meetings, and for me to leave, that meeting was killing me, because it really, I didn't see it effective. It was more a show of USF trying to show their technology. They could have sent you all of those survey stuff, filled it out, come back and gave you the results, and you could have talked about it in public. Y'all spent more time trying to load a picture and polls and all that stuff, and the discussion got lost. So, I know we want to move into technology. That was a good testing ground, but I think as someone who was here and then tried to watch it when I got back home, and just seeing screens of Q-codes and then survey stuff you couldn't read, I mean, it's great maybe for them to have these type of presentations to go, but effectively, y'all should have gotten the survey, filled it out, got it back. They could have come back with the results, and y'all could have discussed the various issues, because there were a lot of things in that pamphlet that really had relevance for open discussion. And that's my recommendation. Thank you for your time, and I do guarantee I will speak about a few other issues to come.
Thank you, Mr. Lakkas. Are there any other public comments? Before we move on, I just want to say, you know, I think that one of my things is I'd like, as I've said before, I'd like to be kind as we can to people, especially when we get up there and speak. Everybody up here is working as hard as they can. I know there's some questions to people sometimes as far as whether that's good enough for them, and certainly, we don't ever think it's good enough for us either. But in the future, if we have residents that get up and basically state things that are not true, I'm going to either myself correct them, or I'm going to ask the person that that comment is directed to, if they wish to respond to it. They may not want to, and that's probably the best approach, but in the spirit of fairness, I think it's something that we should do. And as presiding officer over these meetings, I'm going to do that. We'll just move ahead and be as constructive as we can and do the best job that we can. Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Item 1 is authorized execution of Jolly Trolley Coastal Route Funding Agreement. Item 2 is approved grant application for Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Direct Grant Program. Item 3 is award file number 220158-N-JL Food Miscellaneous Supplies. Item 4 is award file number 220153-C-AS Wireless Data, Voice, and Accessories Utilizing National Association of Master Agreement Number MA176-1. Number 5 is award file number 220125-B-AS Supply, Deliver, and Install Above-Ground Fuel Storage Tanks. Item 6 is increase file number 210067-C-AM Utilizing School Board of Pinellas County Contract 21-060-081-RN. Number 7 is increase file number 22027-N-AM Single Source Purchase of Chevrolet GM Original Equipment. Number 8 is increase file number 22077-N-JL Single Source Purchase of Caterpillar Original Equipment. Item 9 is increase file number 220126-N-AS Single Source Purchase of Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts. Item 10 is award file number 220123-B-AS Point of Sale System Software and Installation of Related Services. Item 11 is award file number 220149-C-AS and filter repair, sand filter repair utilizing Pinellas County Contract. Item 12 is award file number 220124-B-AS Supply and Deliver Decorative Street Pull Packages. Is any item, does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items? Go ahead.
Number 1.
Number 1. Is there anything else? Okay. All right. Let's have a motion for items 2 through 12 in a second, please.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you have any public comments concerning these items?
Okay, Peter Lakkas, 514 Ashland Avenue, to get you prepared, 5911. 5. First off, I'm curious why this is even on the consent agenda versus a special agenda, because this is over $50,000. It's $205,839.70 for above-ground fuel storage tanks, and the reason is the purpose of this contract is furnish, deliver, and install two new fuel tanks, diesel and ethanol, need to replace the city's existing fuel tanks due to age, and a secondary containment tank leakage from the diesel tank. Number 9. This is an increase to Ovivo, an original equipment manufacturer, from $24,000 to $70,000. It says now, the purpose of this increase is to replace worn-out axles and wheels on the sand filters at an estimated cost of $40,000. And in the memo from Robert Marsunik, it says an estimated $40,000 in parts are currently needed, currently needed to replace the existing worn-out axles and wheels on sand filters. So, there's another $40,000 increase on sand filters for the wastewater treatment. And here's another item, number 11, which is a new award, a new award for, here it is, authorized expenditure of $68,640 for sand filter repairs at the wastewater treatment facility. The drive system and rails for the sand filters are currently worn and require immediate repair and replacement. So, I understand the urgency of all of these things, but I kind of wonder how this crept up to y'all. Y'all are new, so where was the previous commission on this? Were they not being informed? A leaking storage tank, these axles, and in fact, it says it's critical to keep, where is it, FDEP? Clarifiers remove suspended solids from wastewater and gravity filters. and gravity filters, provide a filtration to meet FDEP high-level disinfection requirements. These processes are essential components of the wastewater facility. Facility not can treat, cannot treat wastewater without this equipment. So I know our staff works hard, but, and now we're aware of it. But why did we get to this point in the first place? Thank you.
Mr. Lacorius, Mr. Funchen's here. Could he address the, or you address the ground fuel storage tank?
Paul, if you just briefly go over that issue, and then I'll have Paul come up for the, if you want, any explanation on the other two items.
Good evening, Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Yeah, our fuel tanks went in in nineteen ninety-six. They actually have an inspection port, which we inspect it four times a year. DEP is usually there along with inspections and full reports. It's a double wall, the tanks in the ground are double walled so to make sure there's no leakage from the inside tank before it actually contaminates the ground. We discovered a few months ago that that inner wall was failed. There's no contamination of ground whatsoever. And this is actually kind of normal on these type of tanks when it comes to replacing them.
Why it's on the consent instead of the special consent?
Well, usually it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and over. That's usually, usually the line that we go to. It's not, it hasn't been fifty thousand probably. It might have been back in the day, but it isn't now.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to cover the other items?
And Paul, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thanks, Mr. Funchen.
Yeah, I'd like to say this wastewater item's actually something where staff was working in-house to keep things working as long as they possibly can. It was actually something planned to do for next year. But it's a case of a heavy piece of equipment that rolls on a steel rail, and it reached the point where we just couldn't keep fixing it in-house anymore. We actually have to come in and do some parts and construction to fix it and make it work more permanently. So a sign of doing in-house work, and it just reached a point where it couldn't be repaired in-house anymore, and we need to take action to fix it with the, with the new parts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. Are there any other public comments concerning these items? If not, IT, are there any Zoom comments? Any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second for items two through twelve. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, item one, Commissioner Carr, you asked for this to be pulled off?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a Jolly Trolley Agreement with PSTA, and it's with Tarpon Springs, Pinellas County, and Clearwater. Pinellas County's portion, I believe, is for Palm Harbor. And the request is fifty-three thousand dollars a year with an escalator of six percent a year for the next, I forget how many years it is, three years, with options to renew. I had issues with this contract when it was first brought up to the board a few years back. The Jolly Trolley then came back and offered some advertisement to the city, which was nice to receive. But one of the problems I have is that I believe that Tarpon Springs is underserved in public transit significantly. One thing I'd like to bring your attention to as the board is the residents and the businesses of Tarpon Springs pay one-point-six million dollars, or over one-point-six million dollars a year in transit tax. And I believe that we don't get the service as residents in Tarpon Springs that we should for those dollars that are spent. With that, I'm not going to support this tonight with the Jolly Trolley. I do believe that the public transit authority should be covering the full cost. I know they're covering the majority of it, over one-point-two million dollars of the total cost between the Clearwater, Dunedin, Palm Harbor, and Tarpon Springs. But I do believe this is something that the public transit authority should be fully funding and not asking the city of Tarpon Springs if it's basically one full-time employee that we're not able to hire because of the Jolly Trolley. Do I support the Jolly Trolley? I love the idea of it. I love having it. But I really think it's a public transit authority. It's additionally taking more taxes from our residents and giving it to the PSTA. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just ask Commissioner, I'm sorry, any other comments from commissioners? I should ask that first. City Manager Lacorius, did you want to offer any information or anything?
No, obviously, I was here for his previous objections on this guy. I mean, it is what it is. The county and the other entities, the four entities there negotiated with this. This is what we all came up with in the contract. And it's either us in with that trolley or not in with the trolley. It just boils down to that.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Public comments. IT, are there any Zoom or remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we've got public comments. Is there a motion in a second to approve?
Motion to approve authorized execution of Jolly Trolley Coastal Route Funding Agreement.
I'll second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, it's seven oh-three. We're going to move on to the special consent agenda. And item thirteen is medical, dental, life, and long-term disability insurance renewals. City Manager Lacorius.
Yes, I'll have our HR Director Jane Niffen come forward and introduce our consultant, who's worked very hard on this along with all the other things they work on very hard for us.
Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm here tonight to ask that you approve the renewals for our medical, our dental, our long-term disability, our life and AD&amp;D insurance. I'm not going to belabor what's in your backup, but you can see that the renewals have been very favorable given the current economic climate. So without further discussion, I would like to introduce Mr. Sean Fleming from the Garing Group. He's their Senior Benefits Consultant.
Thank you, Jane. Good evening, everybody. Again, for the record, Sean Fleming, Senior Benefits Consultant with the Garing Group. Everybody's favorite time of year, medical insurance renewals. But overall, we have pretty good news. So I'm going to go ahead and just walk you through a little bit of history and talk about where we are, give you a little insight kind of where the market is. And happy to answer any questions along the way or at the end. All right. Let me try the old-fashioned way here. I'll jump over there and click. So taking a look, first off, the city is fully insured for all lines of coverage. So what that means for everything that the city has is the city pays a premium to the insurance company, and the insurance company ultimately takes the risk on the cost of those programs. So if employees have more claims, use the plan higher than expected, the insurance company or trust, in the medical case, they're out that money. So the city's protected in all of the top-end caps that we're giving you. The most important lines of coverage are the one that employees pay the most attention to is the medical insurance, and then we have the health center. Those are both offered through FMIT, which is the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust through the League of Cities. The medical plan is with United Healthcare through that. And then we have dental, vision, as well as a lot of the other coverages there. So that's just a little overview of those coverages. Got the clicker working here. So taking a look at the medical plan, as we look at the medical plan, just high level on the benefits. So employees, if they go to the doctor, they have a primary care copay of twenty dollars. Forty dollars if they go to the specialist, a hundred and fifty for the emergency room. And then if they go into the hospital, they pay a deductible, and they have an out-of-pocket max of twenty-five-hundred dollars for the year. So worst-case scenario, if you have a real costly situation, whether that be in orthopedic surgery, cancer, things along those lines, every individual has a cap of twenty-five-hundred dollar on the plan. So that's really the protection and where they're looking there. So a little more history, in two thousand twenty, right kind of in the middle of the beginning of COVID, we went out to RFP. We had twenty-five overall proposals received, five of those for medical coverage. Really, six major carriers in the market. So you got just about everybody to bid with that. We also looked at whether or not it made sense to discontinue the clinic at that point. But overwhelmingly, the responses came in. The insurance carriers realized that that clinic provides a reduction in claims because people are going there and we're shifting those costs out of the medical plan. So the most competitive rate at that time was to remain with the Florida League of Cities at a reduction of two percent. Then in two thousand twenty-one, we were able to get no increase on those coverages. So ultimately, we're still two percent below those prior years. So two thousand twenty-two, we did RFP for some ancillary lines of coverage. But what we really want to talk about first is kind of claims experience. So claims experience is when employees are using the plan, when they're going to the pharmacy, going to the doctor, going to the hospital. What the insurance company is looking at is how much employees are spending on the plan for those services. And what we do is we graph those out for you to kind of make it easy, I'm a little bit more of a picture guy, to see those claims per employee per month. So we take total claims each month divided by the number of employees on the plan. If you take a look going back to two thousand seventeen and eighteen levels, we're just under a thousand dollars per employee per month in claims. Two thousand and nineteen, twenty, obviously, we had a month or two there where a lot of medical services weren't provided. So you see that little bit of a dip. But two thousand twenty and twenty-one, we've trended back up. But overall, over that five-year period, the city is doing much better than a lot of your counterparts in that regard. If you think about right now, medic, inflation in general, we all know where those numbers are. Typically, medical inflation or that cost of care was always seven, seven, six percent higher than just regular inflation. So think about what that means and what that would look like on that graph. We've increased eleven percent year-over-year. If regular inflation's at nine, you know, that accounts for really a big part of those added costs is that inflationary factor. So overall, the city's really doing well. Eighty-two percent loss ratio. So that means eighty-two cents on every dollar that's paid in is paid out in claims. And then there's a margin there for the companies to recruit doctors, network, all those things. Pretty much right in the line for a group the size of the city. So what does that mean? Ultimately, the League of Cities, what they offered was a five percent increase to the rates. So think about, costs are up eleven percent year-over-year, but the League of Cities has come in and proposed only a five percent increase to those medical rates. A lot of our other entities in the area have been looking at, you know, kind of high teen, low teen renewals, anywhere in that thirteen to seventeen percent. So overall, five percent increase on the medical is definitely a much better position than a lot of entities in the surrounding area. That includes no change to the schedule of benefits, so the employees won't see added costs in terms of copays, deductibles, and then no change to the health center. So ultimately, the recommendation that we're putting in front of you today is to renew with the Florida League of Cities, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust with the current plan. And then as far as the other lines of coverage, essentially, everything else is no increase. The one change is we are looking at changing the flexible spending accounts. So there's a cost there of about nineteen-hundred-and-forty-four dollars for the year. So overall, the medical is really the only one with the increase, and then that slight change on the flexible spending accounts. And with that, I am happy to open that up, open up to questions. And Jane, is there anything else you'd like to add? Or did I get it all? Okay, perfect.
Let's go to public comments first. Do any, are there any public comments concerning this item? IT, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Thank you. Okay, Commission, let's see if you've got anything. Vice Mayor Lund? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. As a whole, this is great news for the city. Five percent increase with what was just shared. Being on the board for so many years, these numbers are kind of not, it's not normal to see only a single-digit increase. So it's good for our budget. It's good for this coming year. It's good for our residents. It's good for our employees with all these benefits. You said something in the presentation that the Garing Group negotiated with Florida League of Cities to obtain the renewal. So is there a negotiation in that process? Or do they just come to you and say, "Look, we're going to go ahead and give you five percent," or that we understand you guys went out the bid a few years ago, and we want to be aggressive with this too?
Yeah, so what we actually do kind of in that process is we do, in our office throughout the year, we're getting the city's claims experience. So that's, that's that monthly claims utilization. But there's also one other factor, which is what we call catastrophic claims. So we look at any claim over fifty thousand dollars, and we go into kind of looking and saying, you know, okay, this claim has happened, one. So let's, let me make up a number. You could have a million dollars in claims for the year, but nine-hundred thousand of it could theoretically be one claim. Right? So what we're doing is we're looking at those large claims to say, one, are they an anomaly, meaning it was, you know, something like an accident? So even though there was a cost there for that, what we do as a part of that negotiation is work with them on saying, hey, this shouldn't happen again next year. And then we look at some of the other claims to say, maybe there was a significant cost with that, but will it be ongoing or not? And some will and some won't. So as we do that, we generate a projection based on inflation, based on utilization, based on headcount and headcount changes. And then obviously, you know, the carriers have kind of a starting point where they want to get to. But we ultimately have a point that we feel is, you know, it should be no higher than this. We were actually a little bit higher than the five percent at the end of the day. We don't always tell them the number we're looking for. We just get them to keep trying. So they ultimately came in kind of under that number that we would say is fair based on cost and trend and all those things. So we feel that it ended up in a good spot.
Yeah, I think it's great news. The eighty-two percent loss ratio, is that common? Is that kind of the normal number? Is it higher than?
So overall, if you take a look at it, so every group's loss ratio is going to be different. It's a function of two things. It's a function of those claims, but it's also a function of the premium you pay. Right? Two entities could have the same claims per employee, but one could be paying a lot more or a lot less. So industry-wide, on a group, you know, the size of the city of Tarpon Springs, right at about an eighty-three to eighty-four percent loss ratio is kind of break even for the, so that lets them cover their expenses, cover their costs. And typically, what you'll see with, you know, a break-even-type loss ratio is a renewal increase in line with medical inflation, which is going to be in that probably nine to eleven percent range right now. So overall, just using that as kind of a simple benchmark on the five. But the loss ratio, you know, it's specific to each individual group. Back to the original part of your question.
Just, I'll try to wrap it up a couple more here. You, you mentioned that the other cities or in the area around, we're seeing mid-to-high teens. Are those cities with your group or are those outside of your group?
Combination. And obviously, for most entities, it's based on their claims experience. What I will say we've seen is for a lot of the entities in kind of what we would call small group, like a hundred or less employees, we've seen a lot of those high teen renewals. As you get larger, it's really based on your individual claims. So, you know, if your claims are really low, you shouldn't expect to see an increase regardless of what the market has. of what the market has. But a lot of those smaller groups that are kind of more subject to the market and where it's going, those are the ones in that range.
Yeah, I would say a net increase of 3% since 2020 is pretty incredible. So I appreciate what your group has done. How much longer are you under contract for, do you know?
November.
Okay. I think you guys did a great job, so appreciate it.
Did it, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. Is there any possibility that when they do a negotiation, like with all homeowners', you know, insurance and car insurance, you all make a decision on how much risk incrementally you'd want to take on? Is there any way that the city could save money to have a catastrophic, as you said earlier, type for those who want to take that risk? I mean, $2,500 may mean a lot to some, but to some, $25,000 wouldn't. So is there any way that, do we get that much of a benefit from being a mass 300 employees? Or is it easier or possibly cheaper for us to do 100 here or 100 there? I'm just curious, I'm not an expert at this at all.
Yeah, so, so just so I understand your question, when you say take the risk, are you talking more kind of on the employee level, meaning they would take more? So what you can do is you can have multiple plans, right? You could have one plan with the deductible that I showed you for yours, and you could have one plan with a $5,000 deductible. And that plan inherently will cost less in that regard. So you would ultimately be having a couple of plans, and you could have a lower premium point for somebody that wanted to take a higher level of risk in that. The one thing I'll say is when the Affordable Care Act passed back in 2008 and a lot of the provisions came in, you know, 2009, 2010, the government set caps on maximum out-of-pockets. So basically, that worst-case scenario, if I have, you know, a really bad year, I get a bad diagnosis, there's a cap on the most that I can pay. And it's in the $8,000 range, I think, right now. So you can't jump up to, so to speak, that $25,000, $30,000 range, because ultimately, the government's saying that doesn't comply with the level of coverage you need to offer as an employer. Otherwise, you're subject to a penalty if you want to exceed those limits. So there's a little bit of option in having multiple plans. Overall, what we see, though, is from an insurance company's point of view, they're looking at worst-case scenario, right? They're not worried about the person that fills a prescription a month and goes to the doctor twice a year. They're worried about those really high claims. And if I have 250,000 in claims for the year, whether my maximum out-of-pocket is 5,000 or 9,000, really doesn't do that much to move the overall price. So when we see that, we see a lot more risk that the employees would need to take for not a lot of premium savings. So a lot of times, it doesn't make sense in that regard.
Thank you. I was also looking like, you know, it could be a single worker, male per se, that wouldn't need childbirth, pregnancy-type thing, and I know that's an expensive thing. So I was just curious if they could, you know, like a Schmorgasbord-type pick out what they would like?
So that also, the government basically regulated with the Affordable Care Act, they gave a list of kind of what they call essential health services. And all plans, you can't pick and, you know, pick and choose some of those benefits. Basically, you've got to cover all the major stuff regardless on the plan. So there's not really a flexibility to, you know, kind of like on your home, you could say, maybe I don't want to buy Windstorm, I'll take my, my chance on that, but I do want Fire. There's not really that option in, in medical for, all the big-ticket items basically have to be covered.
Thank you. Would you just a little bit explain flexible spending?
Flexible spending, yes. So a flexible spending account is a pre-tax account that the government allows an employee to make payroll deductions into that account on a pre-tax basis. So I need simple numbers. So if I did $100 a month out of my paycheck, what happens is I get $1,200 essentially available to me at the beginning of the year to use for qualified expenses such as copays, eyeglasses, dental care, all those things. And I have that money available to me at the beginning of the year. I make those payroll deductions throughout those 12 months, ultimately to true that up by the end of the year. So that's, and, and to the presentation, we're just changing the vendors on the flexible spending account for the upcoming year.
Thank you. Mayor, no further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kuyas.
No, no questions.
I, I have just a, a few quick ones. We, I think we're fortunate that it's 5%. I mean, that's the way I see it. We're extremely lucky. Last year, I'm waiting for the, the shoe to drop. And the, it's 22, $223,000 increase is over what we paid last year for the whole package, which I think is very, very good compared to what we're seeing as far as project costs. I don't know that you got into this, but as far as the employee satisfaction, I know United Healthcare was their hardcore favorite a couple of years ago, and we've been able to save it then, and we're continuing on with that. Is that pretty much still the case now? They're dead-set on United Healthcare, and they're satisfied with it, I guess is what I'm saying.
I will say, I can defer partially to Jane, but from our off, so in our office, we have a whole team that, you know, if your employees have a claims issue or something, they call in, and I monitor kind of all that tracking. And on our end, we don't see any complaints coming through about United Healthcare. Jane, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, or if, sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
That's right. No, I would like to add that over the course of my tenure here, employees have been very satisfied with United Healthcare. They provide, of course, it depends on which plan you select, but we have been able to manage to keep a good level of benefits at a reasonable cost, and we hardly get any complaints. They're the odd one, but it usually has to do with maybe a doctor's office coding something incorrectly or whatever. And we do have Garing, and we do have FMIT that help us work through those, those problems. But by and large, I would say the majority of your employees might be a little upset if we changed plans right now.
Thank you. It's, it's been quiet, usually you hear something. It's not so much it's a great healthcare plan, but when there's problems, you hear about it, so, and, and a concern over losing it because of costs. So I, I think we're okay. As far as, I don't know if you've got your little teacup with the tea leaves, is there anything that you see coming down for us next year?
So this year overall, I've been with Garing Group 15 years, I've been 21 years in the business. This has probably been the roughest year in terms of renewal and percentage of increase. So if I take it back a step, what's really happened? We had a backlog when COVID hit. And we had a lot of individuals in the last 12 to 18 months that have now come back and had surgeries that were put off. They've got care, they've found things because they put off preventative screenings. And overall, we've seen claims, you know, across our book of business, up at really high percentages, 15% to 20% year-over-year increases on those claims costs. And, you know, that's what drives a lot of those higher renewals that I've talked about. So we have some groups that have not experienced that, as the city has not really experienced that kind of spike. The industry sort of expertise or looking at it is that those claims that were driven up were a couple of things. It was a lot of cancers that were missed during screenings. It was a lot of orthopedic-type procedures, which are very expensive, that were put off. And then it was the cost of COVID. And the prevailing thought is that the second half of this year, we should see things start to trend down. So the city never really trended up. So my hope is, knock on, knock on wood, that, you know, the city wasn't really subject to that kind of delay and, and then subsequent spike. So overall, I'm giving you a long answer, but I wanted you to have the history. There's nothing really that we see so far that would indicate that, you know, that ominous sort of spike is coming. There's nothing in your data that shows us that. The prevailing thought is it would have happened by now if it was going to happen.
That's great, great news, at least tonight. We'll see next year.
We'll see any year.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we all appreciate you working hard, and know it's not easy, and I know the employees are very appreciative of maintaining the same healthcare that we've had in the last few years anyway. So thank you. We've gone to public comments, we've had commission comments. I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Anybody's second?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr, you're seconding, okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Should we try and squeeze in the tree, tree removal?
Yeah, so Ms. Lewis can go home. I think it's pretty fast, there's only one bid, so.
Let's go to item 14, award bid number 220142, tree removal related services. Ms. Lewis is going to do this?
Yeah, just real fast, we only got one bid for this item. Janina, if you want, she explained in her, in her memo that you have, but the process, even with one bid that she went through to see if we needed to go out again. So just real, the fast version, let them know what you did, and you're comfortable with this bid, and we're all comfortable, this is a good price for the company and the services we get.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Yes, recently, we bid out the tree removal and related services, and related services really means like the trimming and pruning care that we require. We sent this bid out and received one bid back. I took a look at it when it came back, and then I went out to the other plan holders who had pulled the bid. Basically, they were interested, but then they didn't bid. So I sent them a survey, you know, could you relay to us why you chose not to bid on this item? No one came back. I called a couple of them, I got no responses. At that point, I sent it back to the, to the arborists and to the departments to take a look at this. This is our current contractor, or he was our current contractor, it's now lapsed. He has provided good service in the past, and based upon the pricing, he has really offered a decent price that's fair and reasonable.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Are there any, let's go to public comments. Any public comments on this item? This is on tree removal, our tree removal contract. Okay. Any remote access comments, IT?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
You know, I'm, I took a look at this, and my general guess is because of the current labor shortages, that the reason you didn't get any bid responses is, excuse me, firms are taking a look at higher margin, higher return on investment-type projects and, and trying to cut costs or keep costs to a minimum for a city, or it's kind of not in their, in their thing. You know, it's, it's kind of something that we're going to have to live with. We may want to re, how long is this contract for?
This is a five-year contract.
Five-year contract. We may have wanted to look at it sooner than five years, but.
But there's a, I'm sorry, there's a cancellation provision, is that right?
Yes, that's always an option.
There is a cancellation provision.
Okay, well, then I think we should take a look at it again in another 18 months to two years.
Thank you. Vice, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Kuyas?
No questions.
I don't have any either. Okay, that's commissioner comments, we've gone to public comments. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. We're going to go to item 21 now, it's 7:30 exactly, good call, City Manager. 7:30 exactly, we're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions and get back to the special consent agenda after that. The first item is Resolution 2022-24, Application 22-21, Tarpon Springs Apartments Site Plan Review, 331 North Safford. City Attorney Trask, I, I don't see that this is quasi-judicial, is it?
It is, site plan.
Okay. So why don't go ahead and read the resolution by title and give the instructions for quasi-judicial, and also swear anybody in that's here to give testimony?
Yes. This is Resolution 2022-24, Resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 22-21, requesting site plan approval for the Tarpon Springs Apartments to construct an eight-unit multifamily development totaling 11,200 square feet of gross-floor area and 0.67 acres, more or less, located at the southwest corner of North Safford Avenue and East Park Street in the T4C residential high district transect zone of the sponge docks and community redevelopment area special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. I'll read those quasi-judicial procedures. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it's not the Board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, anyone that's going to speak on this agenda item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, I'm going to go ahead and swear you unto oath. Swear the testimony you're about to give, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, is the applicant here?
I saw Mr. Mavramatis standing back there.
Okay. Mr. Mavramatis, good evening. Okay. Is there anybody here that claims to be an affected party by this matter? Has any commissioner had any ex parte communications concerning this item? I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Ms. Vincent, if you could, go ahead and make your presentation, please.
Thank you, this is Application 22-21 for Tarpon Springs Apartments. This property is located at the southwest corner of North Safford and East Park Street. It's located in the T4C transect code in the uptown character district of our special area plan. So this project is for an eight-unit multifamily development. It's actually in three different buildings, so there's a one-four, one-four unit building and two, two-unit buildings. They meet all of the basic requirements of the special area plan with regard to site plans, are a couple of issues to be discussed with that. So here's the overall site plan. So facing Park Street, or fronting on Park Street, this is a four-unit, two-story building. And then fronting on North Safford is, is a two-unit building here, and a two-unit building here, these are multi-story. And then you have interior parking that's accessed solely off of Park Street. These little diagram here is, this is representing AC units. Here's your stormwater pond. And so that's the overall site plan as it lays out. These are your building elevations. These are fantastic. This is the type of development that we really wanted when we put the SMART code in place. So they really, these are two-unit buildings, this is facing Safford, you have a central courtyard that accesses to the parking in the back and to the units. This is just our general requirements for the SMART code. I will call out, there are two warrants that are actually being requested. The first is with regard to, we have what we call a building frontage requirement. So it requires a certain build-out along the frontage at a specified, you know, maximum setback. So in this instance, let me go back to the site plan. You have a, you know, there's a percentage requirement, they don't quite meet it, so what they'll be asking to do is a warrant to allow a street screen here, which is basically fencing and landscaping. So it kind of continues that nice walking environment, that's the intent of that frontage requirement in the SMART code. And so that's, this is where this is being called out, the six-foot fencing with landscaping. We also have landscaping along this frontage, so we'll, and then they have, they've given us an elevation again, this is the Park Street frontage. So this street screen that we're talking about, that we're requesting the warrant for is along here. So you see the, the top of the, of the, you know, the vinyl fencing, and then you'll have landscaping along the front. So they've done a very nice job meeting the intent of that requirement. The second issue or requested warrant or waiver request, I should say, is actually to the visibility triangle requirement. So as required in the code, you basically take, you know, we measure back 30 feet along the intersection of the two roads at the property line. And so you'll see the corner of this building falls into, this is, you know, the statutory requirement for the, for the, for the site visibility triangle. In this instance, though, since you, you know, the only traffic that you have is southbound because the Safford is split and you can't cross it, you can't have a left-turn movement in here, there really is no issue with an actual site visibility triangle. You pull up here, you'll be able to see traffic coming from the north, going south on, on Safford. So it's really not a, it's not a functional issue at all. And then again, just kind of looking at the functional issue, looking at where the actual streets intersect, it pushes it out even farther. So we don't think there's a site visibility triangle issue or, issue to deal with here at all. So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the site plan, including So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the site plan, including the requested warrant and waiver request, subject to our four standard conditions that you see on all of these. One of those, I'll call out number three, which is the requirement to comply with the Public Art Program requirements if the aggregate job value exceeds one million. Planning and zoning board did review this on July the eighteenth, and they recommended approval by a four-o vote, and we did have one person that spoke in support of the item at that particular meeting. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
I'm gonna go to Commission comments. Any Commissioner have any questions? Not comments, questions. Any questions from the Commission? Vice Mayor Lunt?
Is there a, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, Renee, but what I'm seeing within these transect zones as of late, especially under developments, is the predilection to wanna suggest a six-foot-high PVC fence instead of a wall, which is actually part of the transect code. This is, in my estimation, maybe the second or third time I've seen this come up. I'm not a particular fan of white vinyl fences. We are starting to see way too many of them, as far as I'm concerned in this city. Is there a particular reason from a builder's point of view that we, that they don't wanna put walls up anymore? Because in my estimation, personal estimation that is, I think the walls actually look better. I think they dress nicer than, than a white PVC fence, no matter what you do with landscape.
I mean, I'll actually defer that to the applicant, but, I mean, generally speaking, it's probably going to be, you know, a long-term cost and maintenance issue. And I have heard developers say that they actually would prefer to have, you know, the vinyl fencing. It doesn't have to be white, and with, with the landscaping buffering in the front of it, so you kind of get a depth, you know, a better depth of, and change in, you know, you'll have your landscaping at one level, and you'll have the fencing behind it at another level. So that's what we've kind of heard going through these, but, I mean, I would definitely encourage you to ask the applicant that as well.
Yeah, that's just a, from my, I can understand it from a maintenance point of view, but from my perspective, from a long-term and, and street visibility point of view, it's, it's a deprecation of what we actually intended, because that's what we wrote into it.
I understand.
Commissioner Carr?
Just a quick question. Renee, so the reason for the wall or fence is because there's not enough frontage of the building against the property, right?
Correct.
Could the Board provide a waiver to not even require a fence for that retention pond area? Or an additional fence, not the one that's required by code, another, I'm not sure if a retention pond would require fences or not, but...
So the requirement would be, if they can't meet the building frontage requirement, then they have to do a street screen, and the code specifies that it should be, generally specifies it should be a wall. But you can request a waiver to that, to say we wanna do it in some other type of material, and that's what's before you. If you don't, then, if you don't wanna approve that, then they'll have to comply with the, you know, the strict tenet of the, of the code.
Got it, okay. And there'd be other ways to define a wall, right? I mean, technically, you could have a wall plant, or a fence, it's just how it's defined as a wall. Is it some type of concrete material?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I was getting ready to see if I could actually have the verbatim language out of the code. I don't, I don't have it absolutely in front of me. It's not called out. I don't wanna put the wrong thing into the public record, so...
And you brought up the, I think this applicant, if my memory serves correctly, they're doing another project just north of this, and they're gonna put another fence, and it's not a white PVC, but it's a...
I think it was, yeah, it was something, it was a tan or a dark, darker color PVC with landscaping in front of it.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah, I have only comments, and I know that's not what you wanna hear, so I'm gonna say nothing.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Thank you, Mayor. Renee, I just wanna focus on the visibility triangle. And my concern is relating to just any pedestrian traffic on the west end sidewalk traveling north on Safford. Do you, does the staff feel comfortable that there's enough visibility for any pedestrians on that sidewalk traveling north?
We do. We do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The, I know there was some discussion about, at least a couple of comments about moving the one building back because of the visibility triangle, but there's a five percent slope in the back of that building, is that correct?
Ooh, I believe you're right, yes.
And underneath the balcony, there's a flat area, kind of like a patio. Is that, is that pretty much it? I should ask the applicant that, maybe. We'll do that, yeah. Okay. Mr. Mavramatis, do you have any questions for Mrs. Vincent?
No, I don't. I don't know if I have a microphone.
You're gonna have to come forward, sir.
No questions for Renee?
Thank you. And if you could just state your name and address to the record.
Nick Mavramatis, two thirteen High Street, Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like the report read or accepted into the record?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mavramatis, your turn. If you've got anything to add, I'm sure the Commissioners may have some questions for you, but go ahead.
No, I really don't. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. We've worked quite a bit on getting something that's gonna be, it's kind of special for the area. That's not a normal, what you might think of an apartment to look like. So I really don't have anything to add. I think it speaks for itself.
Thank you. Let's go to Commission comments, or questions. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
Yeah, first I wanna say, I really like this.
Oh, I'm glad.
Proposal. I really like the, if you stick with the artist's rendering, and it even comes close to that, I think it's something that this area is very appreciative of, or should be very appreciative of. I still have some concerns about the fence, though. Would it be a hardship for you to put a wall in?
Well, I mean, I heard your comments regarding the fence is not a wall, that a wall, you're looking for a block or a brick or something like that. But we feel that the vinyl is gonna meet the need there. We're trying to put something to divide that off, to give it, you know, some, I don't know what you call it, not protection, but, you know, because of the distance there. And going up with a block wall, it's, the maintenance, I mean, that's painting and upkeep, where the vinyl is, you know, it's, if something happens to it, it's easily replaced. It's, it's simple to replace, and the cost.
Okay, well, I understand the segregation from the retention pond needs to be there, but...
Of course. I mean, that's...
No further questions. Thank you. Commissioner Carr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I would ask this question, are you in agreement with me that this looks like a great project for the area and contribute to great improvement to the area?
I think so, too. My brother Leon was heavily involved in this, and we had some heated discussions on my opinion of that. But, I mean, it looks great. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nice project, and it's gonna really, you know, be special for the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, would you also agree with me that you must have been at some of our strategic meetings? Because this is exactly what we were looking for, this is what the public was looking for. So were you there? Because I didn't see you.
No, I was not.
Okay, well, I appreciate this kind of building. This is exactly what we need in, in development. I also wanted to touch base a little bit with this fence thing, because I do understand. Could you explain what kind of maintenance a cinder block type wall would be versus the fence?
Painting.
Say again?
Painting, cracking.
Right.
You know, I mean, settling, you know, it's gonna crack. You know, it's just the nature of the beast, especially here in Florida. Everything just settles. So, I mean, it's gonna crack. You know, where the vinyl, if it settles, you'll never notice it. You know, and there again, the shrubbery, the landscaping's gonna pretty much overwhelm that short wall. I mean, that's the whole idea. You know, we want the landscaping to be, stand out. You know, we want, that's what we're looking for. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of landscaping there. And like you mentioned, the rendering on this, I mean, it shows a lot. Some of the trees might change in regards to this, but it's going to, we want the landscaping to stand out. I mean, that's the important thing. That's the beauty of it, too. It adds to the, to the whole project.
So I wanna thank you for your contribution. I love how it looks, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mavramatis, I just would, because I see there's a lot of landscaping, and my only concern is just that visible triangle, if, on that corner there, if you could just consider having less trees or in that area, just to open up the visibility.
Well, whatever, we won't block it anymore. I mean, whatever would be, they will probably be low and/or it'll be the type of tree that's kind of naked on the bottom, you know what I mean? So, but we won't block it anymore. I just don't think, I see that being necessary there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. That's fine. I was gonna ask about the patio in the back underneath the balcony, whether in fact it was like a slab with a patio that they could put a barbecue grill or something like that. And the idea was yours, little flexibility of moving the building back in order to open up the visibility triangle because of the five percent grade. I guess it's slowed downward to the parking lot.
It's been, it's been looked at a lot, to try to figure out what we can do there. It's a bit of a challenge because of the slope, got a rather large retention area, and so it's, space becomes an issue. And we came up with what we have there by taking all that into consideration. And not, you know, we didn't, we didn't wanna put something too close to the street, you know, we didn't want to. And we feel that that works. It works for the area, and it achieves what we're looking for and the city's looking for, and I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem with it, you know, I really don't.
It's a wonderful-looking project, and I'm looking forward to breaking ground and seeing that going up, just like the apartments there on the corner of Pine and Safford, which are nearby, I know that. So I'm satisfied with the question that Commissioner Kulya had asked as far as how to approach the visibility triangle. Ms. Vincent, are there any questions that you have from the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mavramatis. I'm gonna go to public comment now. Are there any public comments concerning this matter?
Peter Delakis, five one four. So, as you've all exclaimed how nice this is, this is what we planned for years ago, what we were envisioning when we put this smart code in. So, thank you, Renee, for being diligent about us keeping it, and you do have good comments about it. But can you go back to the elevation, Safford elevation? That's the one everybody seems to like. You look at that, what do you think? Right off the bat, Tarpon Springs, or the Keys, or, you know, like a small village. That is the look that fits that neighborhood. And so other areas of the community, when you go to have things put in, you need to find the look. That is consistency with the neighborhood versus what the hotel was with its neighborhood. Consistency. You can see it. It's right there. So, I thank the gentlemen for bringing this forward. There were two different gentlemen at the planning and zoning meeting, and one thing they brought up that wasn't discussed, and there's no buffer on the south side of the property between the project and the property abutting to the south. So I don't know if that's an issue or not, but they had recommended maybe some kind of landscaping or buffer along that southern section. I also had mentioned at the time that with this style, because the way it's designed, it's a lower level and an upper level. And part of kind of the whole ambiance, I think of what would be really nice on this street, is if these are like the New Orleans-style-type townhouses where you've got a lower and an upper. So each entrance, each unit has a lower entrance, but it also has a second-floor view. And as things develop along Safford, that's something that could be built in, and I know there may be other design costs and stuff and that, but even if it doesn't happen for this, it's still something that should be looked at when you look at these types of projects. So this is what we look forward to. It's appreciated to see that a developer who wants to build a project, and obviously, there's gotta be some return on investment, but they must have came in and worked with staff, said this is what we can do. I'm not sure who the architect was. It'd be interesting to know, because we need to get them with the hotel people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Mavramatis, I just have to ask, and you can say no or just nod your head, do you have any rebuttal as far as anything that was said here this evening, as far as the public comments? Okay, thank you. Let's close the public hearing and go to Commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything new to add? These are comments, discussion.
You know, as I said, I really like the overall look of this project. I'm not happy about the fence. I would joyfully approve it if it was a wall. I'd like to see that warrant removed, and that's...
Okay, before I go, we are gonna be looking at some ordinance changes here, and that may be something that you'd like to piggyback on. We're gonna have a discussion on that, so keep that in mind. Okay. Commissioner Carr, do you have anything?
No, I, I mean, in my questions, I was doing my best to question, to explain how much I, I think this is gonna be a great asset to our area. The design's incredible. It's gonna help build the character along this corridor of Safford Avenue. So thank you to the developer and the Mavramatis brothers for, for bringing this forward. I'm looking forward to the breaking ground, so thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I had, like a little bit of a concern, but it was answered with the site triangle, and I differ from the Vice Mayor. I happen to like fences. They tend to last and look nicer over time. I understand, you know, anywhere else but Florida, I would agree that that should be. But within a short period of time, every, every stone cinder block wall that I see is either cracked or gonna crack. So, you know, they are heavily maintenance. They have to be painted. They have to be maintained, and there's a lot of them that really degenerate much quicker than the fence. The fence, you can just pressure wash, and you're back to ground zero. So I happen to feel differently. I know aesthetically, it may look nicer, but for maintenance and longevity, I happen to, you know, like the vinyl, so...
You like, you like the fence?
I do. I really do. And I wanna thank Mr. Mavramatis, because, you know, this is exactly what we spoke about and what most of the residents want. So, you know, I'm glad to see that a developer is listening to what the people want. So, and this is, this is Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. Commissioner Kulyas?
I think it's a great project, and just another step towards building up the Safford Avenue-Penelas Trail north of Tarpon Avenue, so I'd support it.
I don't have anything much success, Mr. Mavramatis, on this one. Looking forward to breaking ground. Having said that, let's go to have a, let's have a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
And I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Definitely, yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, item number twenty-two's been deferred to August... Yes. Okay, item number 22's been deferred to August 23rd. So, we go to item 23, ordinance 2022-14, application 22-16, request to vacate portion of Kadjuput? Wait, Kadjuput?
I always say Kadjuput.
Kadjuput?
I know. I don't know if that's right either.
And, um, Mr. Trask, is this...
Kadje.
Okay. This is quasi-judicial. So, if you can read the ordinance by title, give the instructions for the, um, quasi-judicial process, and swear on any resident, uh, witnesses that we may have here this evening concerning this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-14, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, floor vacating and abandoning a right-of-way for 2,812 square feet, more or less, of Kadjuput Way lying northwest of and adjacent to Block 2 Lots 11 and 12 of Bay Shore Heights subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. Uh, there will be a second reading of this ordinance on August 23rd, 2022. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July 20th, 2022, and August 10th, 2022. I guess that's coming up. This is a quasi proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi or rather than a legislative capacity at a quasi-hearing. It is not the Board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. With the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence that the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Anyone that's gonna speak on this agenda item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand. I'm gonna swear you don't know. Swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The applicants are here, I would assume, Ms. Vincent. Okay. Is there anyone that, uh, claims to be an affected party here this evening? I see none. Is there any commissioners had any ex-party communications with the applicant? Are there representatives? Okay, I hear none. Ms. Vincent, please proceed with your, uh, presentation.
Thank you. This is application 22-16, uh, for ordinance 2022-14. This is a request to vacate, um, a portion of a right-of-way. Uh, this is the aerial, showing the area in question here. This is Bay Shore Drive. When, just a little bit of history, when this area, this was a historically, um, a platted land here that was replatted, uh, when this Bay Shore Heights subdivision was actually, uh, developed. And so, what ended up happening was, well, it was this, this was not part of the project, so it didn't get vacated. So, it's just, it's just there. So, what, the, the right-of-way is 60 feet. The applicant is only requesting, seeking va- vacation of, of 30 feet of one-half of it. And just, so, here's the, yeah, this is the, the right-of, this is the right-of-way piece. They, they actually received one-half of the right-of-way to the south, so they have an odd-shaped property now. So, they're basically asking to acquire through vacation this piece, so that this, this can all be combined. And potentially, what that allows them to do then is under the R-100, you see right now that you have two lot, platted lots that face this right-of-way, and it would allow him to reorient those lots, um, and each one be a, a legal-conforming lot facing Bay Shore Drive. And whether or not they intend to do that, there's been some discussions, but, you know, we haven't actually had a full request to, you know, to kind of resub that, if you will, through a, through a minor, uh, you know, lot-line adjustment situation. So, again, this is the, the full right-of-way. This is the piece being requested. This is the applicant's existing property. So, under a review criteria, we have received letters of no objection from all the, um, applicable utility providers. City will maintain ownership of the northwestern half of the right-of-way. That's not being vacated, um, and that can supply any future stormwater or access needs, um, that, that we may have. So, this, the city doesn't, doesn't need this portion of the right-of-way. It doesn't provide the sole means of access to an adjoining property. Yeah, it doesn't, uh, meet any circulation needs of the comprehensive plan, and it doesn't provide a vista to, um, the adjoining neighborhood, to the city's shoreline or access to the shoreline. Uh, this is just, uh, the comprehensive plan policy regarding this. The city shall not vacate, uh, public right-of-way until it is determined that the right-of-way is not required for present or future public use, including utilities, roads, et cetera. And we have reviewed it for that and, uh, do not, uh, do not need it as it currently sits. So, the staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance 2022-14, vacating a portion of Kadjuput Way. And with that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, or, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lund, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes. Could you explain to me why we vacate a piece of property? Do we not, this may be my own ignorance, do we not sell these properties? Is that...
No.
Legal question. I'll go ahead and answer that.
Yeah, thank you.
There is, there's at least one general, Attorney General opinion that says that we cannot, uh, require payment for something that's been dedicated to the public. So, we're prohibited from doing that.
It just was my own knowledge. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cuyas.
Thank you, Mayor. Renee, when was the bottom portion of this roadway vacated?
That was done when, let me go back up to the map, just... So, when, when this was developed, so this roadway went all the way through, um, and I'm... The dates are escaping me, but I want to say this was in like the 2014, 15 timeframe. Um, it may be even a little bit, little bit earlier than that. But it's, it's been in the last, you know, 10 years that this was vacated. And it, what happened, it was vacated when this was, was replatted. So, that, that's how that took place. And since that piece of property, you know, since these properties were not included in that overall replat and development, then this is what was left.
Okay, now, uh, that same map right there, I see DeSoto Way and, uh, I see Eunice Drive that's not completed going north to intersect Bay Shore. Are any of these areas back here have potential to have roads or create some type of access for our city?
So, this, so I think you're referring to this right-of-way here. Those, potentially, yes. Those are platted rights-of-way, and they do provide, at least on paper right now, the means of access for these, these historically-platted lots. So, you know, as, if these, this looks like a through lot here, what's been acquired, you know, so somebody owns all of that, but, so, it, but potentially, yes. This lot definitely would need access through this right-of-way in the future.
Okay, and, um, from DeSoto Way to, uh, the actual circled road, is there any path that can be created to create a little loop over there?
No, that's all privately-owned now by, um, by the homeowners association for this, this project. Yeah.
And, uh, we had talked about if, by giving this right-of-way, will we give, we will give them the potential to split the property?
So, what, yeah, let me, let me get to a better map so you can see this. So, so right now, there are two platted lots here. These are historical platted lots. So, um, this is Lot 12 and Lot 11 of Block 2 Bay Shore Heights subdivision. So, right now, they front on this, actually, this one doesn't even front on anything because this was vacated. So, but this is all under common ownership. If we do vacate this, it will, it will be joined with this overall parcel of land now. So, that would allow them to orient, potentially to orient the property onto Bay Shore with two buildable lots, R-100-sized lots on, fronting on Bay Shore. I don't know if they intend to do that, but it is a possibility.
Okay, and they could, they would split the properties and have them both facing Bay Shore? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Potentially. You can ask the applicant if they're going to do that. I don't know if they intend to or not. I know it hasn't been discussed, but, um, it does give them the ability to do that.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Renee. No further questions, Mayor.
Ms. Vincent, do we allow, uh, pipe stems? I guess that would be all the only way that you would get two buildable lots. Is that right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Uh, pipe stems, I, that's what they call them up in Virginia.
Flag lots?
Flag, flag lots, yeah.
No. We do not, so...
But, I mean, to get two homes on that, wouldn't you need a flag lot?
Well, no, for two, oh, shh, sorry, keep hitting the wrong button. So, are you talking about if, if the vac, with or without the vacation?
Oh, I see. If you split them in, down the center?
Exactly. So, if you split them, yeah, when you add this to it, you'll get the minimum lot width requirement of 75 feet, and you can split the lots, have two lots fronting on Bay Shore.
It would just be a long, narrow lot.
Yeah. They'd, they'd be fully compliant with land development code.
I follow. Okay. That's all I, and, and just the last question. I always want to make sure there's not just current use, but, uh, far-term use as far as there is none that the staff could think of as far as this goes.
We ask utilities and everybody, and, you know, that there could be a potential for stormwater use, but it's, it was, it's really not, it would be more, mostly probably like water quality, and what we're retaining is, is sufficient for our needs.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Let's see, the applicant, do you have, if you could come forward, please, to the podium. I'm, just need to ask whether you have any, um, cross-examination or questions from Ms. Vincent in what she stated. It's just part of the process that we have to go through for the record.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Roy Skelton. I live at 1877 Marla Court in Deneen. With me is Don Brinson. We own through our corporation, as Renee said, lots 11 and 12. We don't have any cross-examinations?
Just whether you have any questions for Mrs. Vincent as far as...
No, I, no, I think she accurately, uh, set forth for the commission exactly what, uh, uh, our plans are for the lot and, and the rationale for asking for the vacation.
Okay. Thank you. Now, it's your turn. Go ahead and proceed.
So, um, as I said, we have owned these lots for a few years. As some of the commissioners maybe have surmised, uh, we are asking for the vacation for the purposes of subdividing the lot, um, in order to meet the R-100 requirements. We need the extra 30 feet. So, that, uh, that's our motivation here, and, and we wanted to, to make sure that that was, you know, brought forth for the commission.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna start off. How do you pronounce it?
Yeah, Kadjuput. I like the, I like the French pronunciation that somebody came up with better, but, uh, maybe we can do a, a name change on that street.
All right, let's, let's go to, uh, commission questions. Vice Mayor Lund, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Cuyas?
Oh, yeah, sir, why do you think the city should, uh, vacate that property for you?
Why should they? Well, I think, um, it provides a benefit to the city by having two lots there. I mean, A, you know, it provides more, uh, property tax revenue. Uh, it, uh, you know, I, I don't think vacant land by itself is terribly attractive. I think by having two lots on there, you give a more aesthetic look along Bay Shore.
Okay, when did you guys purchase that property?
It's been several years, but I can't, I, I honestly don't know the year. It, at least five years, I would say.
Okay, so it was after the Bay Shore Heights development?
No, actually, we owned it before, and before that was redeveloped. So, we've owned it for, you know, uh, again, at least five years, maybe longer.
Okay.
Um, no further questions. Okay, so 12 years.
Mr. Skelton, do you have any near-term development plans for the property? As Ms. Vincent had described earlier, uh, two homes or whatever plans you might have?
Yes, that, that would be our intention to, if, if the commission grants us the vacation, would be to then apply for, uh, subdivision of those lots and, and to put single-family homes on them.
It, it would be, um, the same as, as you heard earlier, where it would be split down the center? Is that...
Correct, so that they would both front on Bay Shore, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Ms. Vincent, do you have any cross-examination?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to public comments.
You're gonna have to swear me in because I didn't realize what was happening.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I live on Bay Shore Drive, and when former Mayor Alahuzis was campaigning for his first term, the people from Seminole Boulevard, all the way to the end where the Stamases live, we came and asked, and you are, if you remember, Mayor, that we would open up all these right-of-ways for a safety factor for storms, for the people to be able to get out, because it would flood down at Sunset, where Mrs. Assamac lives, and it would flood down at the hill from where I live. And we thought we had it going when the, when West Bay Shore came through, that they were gonna open up these streets. Now, I'm a little bit confused, Mrs. Vincent. Well, the other map that you showed off of Sunset, that one road that goes up, um... If this is vacated, will we still be able to open up these streets for the safety? And will the people be able to use the lots behind there to build their homes? If you vacate that? See the long road going up there? This is what I want to know, what's gonna happen to us and those property owners? Think about, because, uh, the mayor had prom, the, uh, Alahuzis has promised that they wouldn't be opened. And if you remember, or the city remembers, all of us came back to City Hall and said that was wrong, but it wasn't changed. Unless, what I'm looking at isn't what I'm thinking of. See the one line where the red circle is? It comes all the way down. The Sunset?
It's separate.
It's not what? There's lots back up in there.
Eunice Drive.
There's lots, and those people want to be able to get in and out. I don't understand, don't laugh about it, but it's true. They pay taxes on it.
I'll show you afterwards.
I know. I live out there. We've walked it.
Ms. Protos, I'll have the city manager contact you and let you know what he knows about it.
That's all right, 'cause y'all gonna vote on it tonight. But that's a right-of-way, and we should not give up any right-of-ways in this city. If they've been on the map a long time, there's a reason for it. You know, I come up here and say that all the time. We've lived out there for over 40 years. People have lived out there longer. The Ferguson Estates were out there. You need to keep your right-of-ways to open up roads.
Thank you.
Periodal Act is 514, Ashland Avenue. Before I begin, Ms. Annie Samarcus has volunteered two minutes of her time. Now, let's get, uh, a little more into the meat of this. I want to briefly just read this. We'll leave this picture up. According to this, shall not vacate public right-of-way. Shall not until it is determined the right-of-way is not required for present or future public use, public use, including utilities, roads, et cetera. Et cetera, et cetera. So, it's not just whether Waukegan has a cable line or Duke has that, public use. Now, what public use do we have potential here? I have to thank the mayor at the end of the budget meeting. You talked about changes to the conditional use to include within it public interest. Now, take a look at this. I'm gonna, I did a little research. I don't know if y'all went on the property appraisers. So, these gentlemen are Palm Harbor 19 Investments, 326 North Belcher Clearwater. Just to the southeast of that is Polardi LLC, 514 North Franklin Street, Tampa. And then that long strip that you see running up and down there next to Eunice is Phillips 2015 Trust, 10 Ponds Way, Oakland, New Jersey. Now, all that big spot in there, just to the north, northwest of that circle and that big pond, if you go on to the property appraisers, how is it listed? You could take a look at it. What does it say? Wetland Conservation Mitigation Area. Let me repeat that. Wetland Conservation Mitigation Area. And that's owned by Meritage Homes of Florida, 5800 East Rain Tree Drive, 300, Unit 300, Scottsdale, Arizona. So, why am I bringing all this up? Buffers. When that land was cleared, you know people were coming screaming about what was destroyed back there. The animals took off, the land, all you got now... The animals took off, the land, all you got now is a whole stretch of road, houses, a little retention pond, but you got a buffer, and what are these properties next to it create a buffer? And you can't see it from this map, you go to the property appraisers, or if you put in, well, you have to put in one of the neighboring addresses, because these properties don't have physical addresses, so you have to put in like seven something something Bay Shore, and then you can click down to their properties, but right along that long stretch of their wooded area is Eunice Drive. So my question be a couple of things, one, I don't think you have enough history, how did they get the vacation in twenty-sixteen in the first place? How did that happen? Were they were buddies with the Bay Shore Heights people and they said, hey, well, we're going to, you know, all right, there'll be some property available? How did they get that in the first place? Secondly, if you look at their diagram where it shows this one, there's two platted lots, so why can't they build on those two lots already right now? They've got access to the Kadjuput Way here, and since they own this, they could put their entrance down here on the south side of Kadjuput Way. Why do we have to keep giving away vacated properties? And thank you, Commissioner Eisner, for bringing it back again, I had mentioned this during the North Trails where Pioneer Development took over hundred-and-sixty feet by twenty, turned out to be worth two lots. Yes, we can't sell it, but somehow it is the public's property, so if we can't sell it, let's use it. What other alternatives do we have? Can we not make that a little mini park, a respite area for people maybe walking along there, some way to accent what is already there? Do we need to pack in more and more houses? Is the sewer line up there where they're going to be able to hook up to the sewer, or they're going to have to build, if they build right now, they put inseptic and then they're going to have to change over to sewer?
Are y'all aware of that?
Okay, good. So, according to this, you're not required to vacate this, you're not required. Honorable attorney, Mr. Trask says they meet the conditions, but again, let me repeat this, where is it? Shall not vacate for present or future use, so I'll leave it among you to debate what potential future use that land could be to the city. And to me, it looks like if they got two lots, they probably could already build on it where the city doesn't have to be giving away rights that they're entitled to, to property, even though they can't sell it for return. And here again, what they argued is two houses, more taxes, more money, that's what they always jangle in front of you, we'll get you more money through all the taxes we're going to get, well, we don't have to give away property for that to occur, they got two lots, they can find a way to build on them that they have already, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Anybody have a comment that's here at present?
Melody Ingalls, seven-hundred, Langston, so you said that they can't pay for this, that we have to vacate it, or there was not a way to sell it because it's illegal? So we're giving them something for nothing, but they're going to build some probably really nice houses, more tax revenue. Is there something they could do for us? I don't know, is there something legal that they could do? Could they put some trees somewhere or do some beautification somewhere, like in the Keys in Monroe County on our land, we have to do some things to help the environment? Is there an alternative that's legal that, so they don't get something for free, but they get a really big benefit, and the city benefits too? Just thought about that.
Thank you, Ms. Ingalls. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, you'll be allowed in to talk, and we do have a raised hand, so I'll allow the first person in. And if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Bobbey, one-six-zero-two, Gulf Beach Boulevard. My brief comments on driving would simply be if there are any way to put a condition on your approval to do so and follow what the young lady stated prior to my call. Otherwise, you don't have to do this, doesn't have to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll allow the next person in.
Sharon Landen, forty-five West M. O. K., Thomas Springs. I think vacating this land for the gain of the developer is entirely wrong, and I just think we should reconsider that, thank you.
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, Mr. Skelton, do you have any rebuttal of anything that you've heard this evening? Mr. Trask, can this other gentleman get up and represent himself? If you can name, give us your name and address, please, thank you.
Sure, by all means, my name is Don Brinson, my address is twenty-fifty-seven Nigel Drive in Dunedin. Mr. Skelton and I have owned the property, as you mentioned, about since two thousand and ten, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it's been about twelve years that we've owned it. You know, I can appreciate, you know, our family's been in Pinellas County for over eighty years, when it comes to environmental issues and it comes to giving away land and dealing with municipalities, our family's done that a great deal over the years, in fact, we owned a large portion of the property that had butted to the Cullens property that allowed for Wall Springs to be acquired and purchased along with McMullins and the Cullens and ourselves. So, you know, when it comes to property rights and it comes to ownership of properties, our family's been very, very strong in regards to it throughout the county. We respect all of you commissioners very much so when you have the opportunity, but this isn't really a problem that's been caused by us, your zoning, with all due respect to Ms. Vincent, Renee's an outstanding land planner, the way the ordinance is written in the R-100, you have to have a certain amount of frontage to be able to meet it. It's either allow this vacation to take place, or for us to be able to build on ours, we're probably going to have to come back and ask for a variance to be able to do so, because you still find ourselves in that situation. The reason that that other portion was remained open instead of vacated all at the same time, I don't know if Renee can pull that back up there again, it's pretty obvious, and with all due respect to our other neighbor that had a concern regarding it, that we're giving away, that was basically allowed for to be the driveway, it was going to be the access, it would have a sixteen-foot minimum driveway coming down in regards to the lot to the rear. The lot on the front, it could have access, depending on how you orientated the elevation or frontage of the house along Bay Shore. We have a layout, which our survey did, that basically allows for two lots that meets the minimum requirements that the city has for lot frontage to be able to do so, but vacating that remaining piece is thirty feet. We didn't ask for the entire sixty-foot frontage, or sixty-foot of Kadjuput, or however you want to pronounce it, you can see in the yellow, it still remains, and the other portion also remains as well, it's just half of the right-ofway itself that has no basic real value to it, other than it allows us to be able to meet the requirements that the city has, to make a lot that's big enough, that's ideal enough to build on, that's going to, again, it's, you know, that old saying that, you know, we're building, that you're going to get the revenue from, it's true, but at the same time, it allows us to be able to build two houses that's going to be able to have, just like the elevation that you had with the previous gentleman, you'd like that, well, this area provides for a Key West style house as well, because directly across the street is what can buy you, so you're going to have view of the water, so it'd be a two-story house that's going to be able floodplain design, that's going to be able to provide a very nice complement to the neighborhood. So, you know, I'd be happy to take any other question that you commissioners have, but it's not an unreasonable request that we're making, we're trying to basically follow the requirements the city has in place right now to be able to build something nice and have the area to be able to do so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the end of public comments, so let's close the hearing, let's go to commission discussion now, and just, Mr. Trask, I just wanted to ask, before we get started, can I ask for clarification from you on a matter that was brought up? Is proffering allowed in Florida?
Proffering?
In other words, can we request the developer to do something off-site? I know it is allowed in Virginia, for example, but, and that's what it's called, is proffering, I don't know what it's called here.
Well, when I think of the term proffering, I think of you're providing some aspect of evidence, but it's not being actually received, it's there for the purposes of technicalities on an appeal, if it ever comes about, but requiring them to provide as a condition something off-site, or requiring them to provide something onsite, to me, it would appear as if it was almost like you're getting something in return, whether it's cash, or product, or landscaping, or whatever, I would advise you not to do that, because I see it as the same thing, whether it's landscaping or money, it would be something in return for the vacation, which I don't believe that you're allowed to do that under the law.
And state law prohibits, again, restate, state law prohibits us from charging for this land.
Correct, and that's based upon a couple of Attorney General opinions, and as far back as nineteen-seventy-eight, I found one on that aspect, so...
And as far as representations this evening that the properties, the property is needed to create two conforming lots, if that, I don't think I can ask Mrs. Vincent any questions concerning that now, is that correct, because we've closed that?
If you open it up, then it would, that would allow Mr. Skelton to step back up, cross-exam, and then present additional testimony, too, so you can do that if you want.
So, if, for example, there's some statement that not exactly accurate, that that additional thirty feet is needed to create two conforming lots, is there a method or some procedural process that we could bring that back if we later find out that that's not accurate?
I would say to you that it's a quasi judicial proceeding, once it's completed and thirty days passes after you adopted whatever action that you're going to take, then you lose that right, just like the applicant would lose that right.
But within that thirty days, we could...
Within that thirty days, the city could appeal the decision, or the applicant could appeal the decision.
You appeal it to the city, to Circuit Court?
Yeah, it would be appealed to the Circuit Court, just like any other quasi judicial proceeding.
Okay.
Right.
Well, let me hear what the rest of the commission has to say, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, so I'm actually looking at the plot of the land from the property appraisers office, I can understand on Bay Shore adding another thirty feet from Kadjuput Way is going to make it a hundred-and-fifty feet, which is divisible to seventy-five foot lots, which is the standard that actually runs along Bay Shore, so that's fine, however, the rear lot dimensions, even with the current vacation, don't meet that standard, it's only a hundred-and-thirty feet, so what's going to happen is if they come back to develop, they're going to ask us for a variance because it's an irregular lot size, so that's something to take into consideration as well. I looked, but I could not find, I did not have the time, how they got possession of the first section of vacation of Kadjuput. However, I can understand that when they bought this property in twenty-thirteen, that there was a road there, they could ask to be developed and get access to that rear property, which is something that we're going to see in other areas of the city as we develop it, so, you know, half on, yeah, that road was taken away because of the development that was given and the retention pond that's there and so forth. I'm kind of leaning towards just saying that, yes, have the other half of that property, but they will come back for a variance because it's going to be an irregular lot size. Based on some of the other comments that we've heard tonight, the area to the west, north of that on Bay Shore, marked as Wetland Conservation Mitigation Area, is actually owned by the developer, they developed that large development there, and it's not going to be able to be developed on at all, so that concern about somebody squeezing something in there about it going away isn't factual.
You can say more if you want to think about it a little bit and get a sense on some of the other commissioners, okay, I don't mean to cut you off, but I...
No, it's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Vice Mayor is completely accurate with the depth, I'm looking at the page on the city's website right now about R-100, saying the depth is a hundred feet for R-100, and the width is seventy-five feet, so I'm not sure if that's come back based on what you said, it being a hundred-and-twenty-nine feet deep. So at that point, it sounds like they're two conforming lots. The width is seventy-five, I understand, if it's vacated, it's going to be seventy-five feet wide, but the depth is still deep enough, it's a hundred-and-twenty-nine, and the code is a hundred feet deep, so there's no variance at that point, if it's approved tonight, it sounds like they're compatible lots, or they could go in and ask for a subdivision of the piece of property and then start building, so I just want to help you out with that one.
What's the minimum lot width that you just mentioned?
The width here, and I'm assuming this is correct, I just found it on the city website, it's seventy-five feet wide for R-100, single-family residential, and then one hundred feet deep. Renee didn't provide that to me, I just Googled it, so, and in my aspect, this is a piece of, when I heard Renee say, it sounded like it was an error, because Kadjuput Way was vacated throughout this development many years ago, and so this piece should have been vacated as well, too, but it wasn't for some reason, so it sounds like it's more of a cleanup, so I'm in support of this in this aspect. Would I like to see one house but on it, instead of two, one hundred percent, but there's property rights there, so...
I understand, thank you, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, I also believe that this right now in its present form can be two conforming lots, if split the other way, the only difference is if we do turn this over, they would then have two properties that they can develop, both viewing Bay Shore and the water, so it's a plus. On the positive side, they're not asking for the whole sixty feet, so there is a thirty-foot buffer from the wetlands, which that always concerns me, but we've given away a zero lot line, so as long as I know that that cannot be developed, you know, close to the wetlands, I don't see it being a massive problem to agree to it, so that's where I'm looking at it, I could also see it as being a tax savings, you know, tax profit for us to have two properties there that are higher value than if they had it split the way it is, so that's my take on it, thank you.
Commissioner Kulaus.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not in support of it as of right now, I believe when they firmly bought the property, they knew what they were buying, the vacation, that was a gift to them, and if we allow this other vacation, the roadway could still be built on the side, and I believe this setup is going to be nowhere different from the Lucille Drive that's a little bit north of there, I think they could still build a property with what they have now, with, you know, that road leading right into it, and just not going to support it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I guess, just a referral to, to Commissioner Carr's statement. When we talk about width, property width, are we only talking about the frontage width? Are we talking about the frontage and the rear property width? Because I'm looking here, and the rear property width, even with the current vacation, is only 130.2 feet.
Okay.
Which doesn't meet 150 feet, which is non-standard as far as I'm concerned. I'm not in favor of this at all.
Not in favor of vacating?
Not at all.
Okay. Just out of fairness, Mr. Trask, I'm going to reopen the public hearing to get some questions answered. Ms. Vincent? If you can, from, I'm going to ask you, I can just jump right into questions, if you could give us the difference, what we've got right now as far as conforming, non-conforming, and then what the, the dimensions are and what we would have with a vacation, without the vacation?
So right now, the two platted lots, I'll just kind of outline, this is one platted lot, this is the second platted lot. Neither one of these two lots, by themselves, are buildable right now. They're legally non-conforming, but they, because they're under common ownership, our code requires that they stay under common ownership because they do not meet individually the R-100 zoning requirements to be built upon. The addition, so it's two things, it's, it's lot area and it's lot width and depth. So these, so if you look here, I mean, this, right now, this, this lot fronts on what is now vacated, so it, it doesn't actually even have frontage on, on, on a street. I mean, you have this little bit right here. This lot fronts this way. So by the addition of this, you get to the minimum 77, and the minimum lot width, there's three ways to meet that requirement. It can be measured at the right-of-way line, you can measure, it can be met at the required setback line, or it can be an average. So if you meet any one of those three, you can meet the minimum lot width requirements as defined by the Land Development Code. So in this instance, we're just looking at the, you know, the width along Bay Shore Drive, split in two, you get your minimum 75-foot lot width. So once you have that, you have, you meet your minimum lot depth, your minimum lot width, and your minimum lot area with the addition of this piece, so.
So without the, without the vacation, we would not have two conforming lots?
Yes, sir. They, they would have to keep them combined as one lot unless they go to the Board of Adjustments and request the ability to separate them to be individually planted, you know, built as lots of record. There is a provision to do that, but that would have to go to the Board of Adjustments.
Through the Board of Adjustment, they could do that?
Yes, they could split the lots through the Board of Adjustments. We still have an issue here, though, with, it's a little wonky, frankly, because this piece of right-of-way has been vacated and they own it now, so this lot doesn't have the required frontage on a platted right-of-way, so it does create issues. This would be problematic going to the Board of Adjustments, even though it's, has a lot of weirdness to it, so it does have the uniqueness, but it, it does still create issues with the fact that this piece of the right-of-way, which would have provided access to this lot to meet the minimum, now it, now it cannot, so.
Okay. One last time. The way that it sits right now without the vacation, there is a mechanism for going to the Board of Adjustments to allow two homes to be built on the existing property with the approval of some variance?
Yes, yeah.
I, I would say yes. It would, it probably be just, it would have to be more than just looking at the lots of record, we'd have to look at the access issue as well, but theoretically, I think you can get there. We haven't, honestly, haven't looked at it in detail for that, so I don't want to go too, I can look at it between now and second reading.
Okay. And, and in the, well, if it's denied this first time?
Oh, that's true, it does, yeah, correct.
And how long would the applicant have to wait to refile this particular process that we're talking about if it's denied this evening?
Don't think for vacations of rights of way that there's any, any limitation on when they could refile.
In other words, they could refile?
They could, yes.
Okay. So ideally, hypothetically, they could go through, if it's denied this evening, go through a Board of Adjustment, if they're not able to obtain what they want, and then come back to the commission?
I, I think they could do that, yes.
Okay. Let me ask some of the other commissioners. Vice Mayor Lunt, it's, any questions?
None at this time.
Commissioner Reisner?
I just think it comes down to a, whether you want to have one, one property there or two properties there. I've seen stuff like this on the non-conforming lots, but as Renee said, it is difficult to try to get access to that second property. So I don't know, we, we, if we vote against it, we're definitely going to be making it a one-property deal, whether they go to the Board of Adjustments or not. If we approve it, we have two properties that I think we can have tax, you know, use from, and otherwise, what do you do with the rest of the property except have a big, empty lot? So, I don't know. It's, it's a tough decision to make. It's, it's everybody to make their own decision on what they want to see, what they don't want to see.
Yeah. That's, we need to have questions right now. So, any questions? None? Okay. Commissioner Cullias?
Thank you, Mayor. Renee, I want to go back to the proposed vacation where I had the, the yellow and the blue. Page five of my, right there.
Yes.
So if we grant this vacation, that side of the right, the right-of-way to remain unvacated could still be paved and create a, a side street or a side entrance to that back property?
To, are, are you saying to this property here?
Yeah, or just to both sides?
So, so right now, the way this, so this, this right-of-way ends right here. This is all vacated.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the only piece of the right-of-way that actually remains as planted right-of-way. So you could have a little road stub to right here, but it can't go down here. That's the ownership of the Bay Shore Heights subdivision.
Okay. So by, by giving that vacation, they may potentially be able to have a plan or design with some access from what's left of the right-of-way?
It would be available, yes. They, I, I think, yeah, I think they could. They could, you could do, you know, if they wanted to put in, well, let me, let me back up. It no longer meets, like, if you were going to put a road in, we have minimum road width standards and development standards, so no, at that point, I don't think, you know, unless we gave them some compensation to say, I want to put in a side-load garage or something like that, and put a, you know, a small piece of, you know, of roadway in there, but it wouldn't meet a typical road standard, so.
Okay. And I'm going to bring up Lucille Drive again. There seems, it's the road that's a little bit north, with that little dead end. One property faces Bay Shore, and the other one actually faces the round, you can't see it from there.
Okay, can't get to it.
Through the Board of Adjustments, could two properties be created not given the vacation with the way they're set up by non-conforming?
On, on this instance, or on the other one?
On this instance, without giving the right-of-way, without granting the vacation.
Without granting the right-of-way. And that, that was, that's the difficulty of it. So what, what we're referring to, we have a section in our code that does recognize platted lots of record. So these are previously platted lots that were platted before our current zoning exists. They're, they're non-conforming, they don't meet the R-100 zoning standards. What our code says is that when lots like that come under common ownership, which these are, the code basically says, then you have to keep them in common ownership, you can't, you can't make them more non, you can't, you can't decouple them. So having said that, we have lots of that situation throughout the city. We do have a provision, and because it's been problematic in the past, we actually have a separate portion of the code that allows, through the Board of Adjustments, to seek a variance to allow the non-conform, two non-conforming lots that are joint, under common ownership, to be independently built upon. And there's a little set of standards to review. So, but the one thing that is, as I say, is a little bit of a wrinkle in this instance is the fact that this lot here, this is the lot of record that they would have to build on, no longer has, really doesn't have access to a platted right-of-way. So what they may have to do is maybe come in and put another easement back in here that creates the frontage to face something this way. So it's a little, we can get there, but it's, it just has some moving pieces to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that really just confused the issue.
But if we didn't give it to them, that blue area could end up being a side road or side street to give access to the back plot?
This, if we don't vacate this piece, I see what you're saying. So does that provide access to this lot if it's not vacated? Yes, it does.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, sorry, okay, misunderstood.
No, no further questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Cullias. Now we're going to go to, Mr. Skelton, do you have any rebuttal for anything that Ms. Vincent had just stated?
No, sir.
Okay. It's your turn now, if the commission has any further questions. Any further questions of Mr. Skelton or the applicant? Okay. Okay. Now we go to public comment again.
If we spoke, if you opened it up?
Ms. Protos, if you could come forward and please.
When Bay Shore Heights was being designed, when they looked at that piece, they decided to leave it alone because they said you needed to open it up all the way around. And as far as Lucille Drive, we said leave it alone because there were going to be accidents on the hill as they came out. And I know that the two neighbors behind me would like to have it vacated, but at that time, Mr. Trask will have to correct us if it's changed, you can't vacate a half of right-of-way or a paper road that's on the old maps in the county. My concern is, how are we going to open up all the way down for safety for the residents there if we have a catastrophe or we have a storm? It is a right-of-way, you do not give away right-of-ways, it's taxpayers' property. And I hate to hear this because I don't like it, I don't want to say it, but once it's built, they're gone. They're not here for us. It's Tarpon Springs property, it's county property, do not give away right-of-way of any kind.
Any other public comments? Ms. Engel.
With all due respect to your city attorney, I just really disagree. In many places throughout the state of Florida and other places, when you have new construction and you're taking away trees and things of that thing, that kind of nature, you are often required to replant elsewhere or do other things elsewhere, and you give something elsewhere, such is the case in Monroe County, Florida, but other places as well. So I don't consider it a profit transaction at all, but when, when you're going to give away something for free that, as she said, belongs to the taxpayers, you ought to get something in return. And I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard anything tonight about what is the tax revenue that's going to be generated? What are the properties next to it or comparable? How much revenue do they generate annually? Do we even know that? Are we going to even ask that question? And what's the value of that vacated property? So if we knew how much revenue we're going to get, and we vacate that, and we say, okay, we're going to recoup it in three or five years, then that makes financial sense. And also, to be fair to these guys, they're going to put probably two beautiful homes up, which just adds to the value and the beauty of our city. So I just think either postpone this conversation or get some other questions answered, especially the one that was posed to your city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. Is there any other public comment?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue, actually, the lady is not correct. This is a vacation, it's not a site plan, it's not a development agreement, it's none of those things, it's a vacation. So you can't put conditions, and just like you read any deed, it'll say $10 and in consideration. So if you're requiring, and it's a quid pro quo, to do something in return, then that's not correct. However, I don't know if this could be posed to the attorney, but if you do vacate it, I don't believe that it will come back as site plans, but there would have to be some kind of division of the property where, I don't know if at that time, you could put any type of conditions on. So that would be, have to be something you'd have to ask your attorney as to what could be done at a later date if you were to vacate it. My thing, I was trying to portray, isn't that they would build in the northwest part of this area, it's just that if you don't give them the vacation, the incentive is to maybe put one house there, and the other property that is next to it would be one house. And then those properties that are owned down on the southern side, it all is one contiguous property. I don't know if there's an old plating to it that would indicate some of these other property lines, but if you look at the property appraisers, that whole long piece is as one. So that possibly could be subdivided off of units. But my thing is, and I think some of the others have expressed, is the general philosophy of vacating city right-of-way, whether we know if we need it or not now, where someone else generates a profit out of it. Now, I'm not saying profits are wrong, why not just put a nice big house there, or as it's been discussed, if they still want to put two, there's ways to do it. And as you go forward, looking to make adaptations to your code, just as you've talked about public interest in conditional uses, and we've had this with vacations a couple of times now, further define public use in this ordinance. Because public use can be a broad category, and again, there's no reason why it has to be a road. You could put a little trail with maybe a picnic table or small playground. If it's the public's, then make something out of it for the public's use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? IT, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. We do have a raised hand, so allow this person in. If you could unmute and state your name and address.
And they've lowered their hand, and it seems that they are not ready to talk, so I do not think we have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to close the public comment again, the public hearing again. Commissioner comments? Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything else to add?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've been discussing this vacated land. When you're vacating a street, like we were discussing earlier on the hotel, you're really depriving a active-use street. This has, as I've heard, you know, there's possibilities, we could make it a park, we could make it a picnic table, and, you know, all of that's nice, but that doesn't bring us in any revenue at all. I don't think anything is going to be done with this property, and off the top of my head, I have to say that we'd be looking at seven to 10 grand a year in, if it is split up in property value to the city. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, I've heard a number of the other commissioners, some in favor, some are not in favor. I, I feel that the, it should be given over, and that's, that's my take on it because it's, it's a positive for the city revenue, that's, and, and that's what we have to look for. I, I don't see it ever being anything that's going to help us in a storm. We have stormwater there. If, if, it doesn't interfere with any sort of... If, if, it doesn't interfere with any sort of wetlands as far as I'm concerned. So I've not heard anything that would make me not wanna go through affirmative. So that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Culias, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, thank you for opening up the comments again. I think we got some questions that helped give direction to everyone involved. And I, there, there's a way to go about building on both those properties. We've, we've heard through the Board of Adjustments. They're very reasonable people. They apply codes well and they'll do their best to be able to help out the city, including the applicants. And there, there's only so much space. I believe you guys were already gifted a nice portion of that lower vacated area. And I would prefer to see you guys to go through the Board of Adjustments to be able to build two, two houses on non-conforming lots. So, thank you.
All right. It looks like the commission's a little split, but here's my read on all of this, and I'm gonna say it now because I'm not gonna have an opportunity to say it after the vote. And, and what I heard was that this vacation, there's no time restriction. The applicant can bring it back anytime that they want. They can take it to the Board of Adjustment and perhaps get two lots out of it. One thing I've learned, and it was pounded into me, and it was reinforced with a sledgehammer by our city attorney, Trask, who, "Once you give something away, development rights, you're not getting it back." So I'm not ready to do an annexation this evening, I'm sorry, a, a vacation this evening, given that there's some mechanisms for bringing it back. And I think that we've got a very good planning director in the sense that could work with the applicant and maybe come up with some other ways of dealing with this. And, and I don't know what they are. I'm, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to get into the, the approach that Ms. Zingle said, although I wouldn't discount that approach at all. I mean, I would have that conversation and, and see what could happen and then discuss that with the commission, not in a sense of polling or anything like that, but just to get a sense of, of, of whether that's something reasonable. And then the vacation of the right of way, I, I'm a big proponent of mini parks. I don't know whether we've got any mini parks nearby or anything like that. I do know we have a Riverside Park, which is right down the street. So right now, given what I've been hearing from the residents and, and there's some uncertainty as far as some approaches and things of that nature as far as how to proceed with this, I, I think that we need to do a little more work behind the scenes because once we give this land away, we're not getting it back. And so that's how I feel about it. It's not an issue of conservation, it's not an issue of roads going through or promises or broken promises. I have no idea why that other piece of property was vacant. It didn't even make any sense to me. But that doesn't mean anything. There's a lot of things that have happened at the city that don't make any sense anyway. But, but that's okay. So the fact that there's a provision of pursuing this further and it not really adversely impacting, and I didn't hear any urgent issues of moving forward with some kinda development immediately, I think that there's time there that we can actually look, look a little more at this. At least that's from my perspective. So that's all I have. And what we need to do, whether you are for the vacation or not, we have to have a, a motion and the affirmative, as if it's gonna pass with a second. And then if you are for the vacation, you vote yes. If you are against the vacation, you vote no. So if I can have a motion.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Motion approved by Commissioner Carr.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Eisner. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
No. Okay, so that finishes up the ordinance for this evening. It's nine o'clock. Is there a desire to take a 10-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna adjourn at 9:02 and reconvene at 9:12. All right, we're running late. Let's reconvene at 9:16. And we're starting off on the special consent agenda item. Board direction on Witcomb Bayou Alternative Analysis and Funding Strategy. City Manager, of course.
Yes, Bob Robertson. How, present that, please?
Thank you, yes. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. We're here tonight to present the results of the Witcomb Bayou Area Alternatives Analysis. Purpose of the proposed project is to provide resiliency along Witcomb Bayou area, and knowing that such a project would be financially challenging to also provide an analysis of grant funding options. So these will be presented to you today by Mr. Ajani Stewart from consulting firm Arcadis. Mr. Stewart is the senior consultant in urban and coastal resiliency for Arcadis and is the project manager. A very quick reminder of how we got here today, back in September, the board authorized staff to proceed with a two-step process. The first step is the alternatives and funding analysis, the results of which are the subject of tonight's meeting. This step included two presentations to the sustainability committee, one update to the B O C, an in-person public meeting, and an online survey using our Connect Tarpon Springs portal. So we had a lot of opportunities for public input to this point. The second step of that process that we talked about back in September will be the preparation and submittal of grant funding applications, pending on board approval if we, you get the approval to move forward with that and which option you want us to move forward with. So finally here, you've been provided tonight's slides and your backup as well as the reports from which the slides were generated. So based on that, I've asked Mr. Stewart to keep his comments brief as he goes through the slides to allow more time for questions at the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ajani Stewart.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, other city officials, members of the public, so I'll just give a brief overview of the project and the summary to date of where we've got into. Just quick agenda for this presentation, very quick snapshot of a flood risk overview for Witcomb Bayou with which I'm sure all of you are very familiar, just a brief summary of the work that's been completed to date that Bob just summarized, and then we'll dive in a little bit more into the alternatives analyses for shoreline protection options and some recommendations, and then show how that aligns with different funding options at the state and federal level, and then some time for questions. So just really quickly on flood risk overview, what you're seeing here is the ten-year flood inundation map, which is provided by the Pinellas County's F I S study, FEMA flood map. I'll get into it a little bit later as to why we are recommending protections to this level as opposed to higher protections such as the hundred-year flood plane. So as you know, in Witcomb Bayou, as with many places in Florida, you're seeing increased flood risks as a result of extreme high tide events, your regular summer heavy precipitation events, and of course storm storms associated with hurricanes and tropical storms. All of these flood risks are being exasperated by rising sea levels. So completed work to date, Bob just summarized this, so again, we did a very high-level overview initially and screening of some potential alternatives, then got some input from the sustainability committee and also members of the public, and then we went into a whole, a deeper feasibility analysis based on can these alternatives be fundable, are they engineering sound, and then also a major component of feasibility is the preferences of the general public as well. And here we are today. So our study yielded four primary alternatives for protection around the bayou, and I think it's important to state that we are looking for a complete bayou protection, so that encompasses areas under county control and also city control, roughly fifty-fifty for the bayou. So the first one is a T-wall, as the name signifies, is a concrete wall with an inverted T. This has been deployed successfully other places in the country, especially in Louisiana. There are some advantages to this, this can be adapted to future conditions as those conditions change, and then some of the major disadvantages is they, it could potentially compromise some views, although the protection levels that we're looking at is to the, again, to the ten-year flood period, which is about five-point-eight foot of elevation, which is roughly in unison with existing mangrove heights there. So this shouldn't be that affected. Water-tight gate must be installed for each private docks, which will have to be self-maintained, and we estimate the cost of this to be about nine to fifty million on the high end. I'll just say this once, and this is applicable to all of the different alternatives, for each of these, we are proposing a vertical lift gate at the bridge near where all the confluence of all those canals, and that is to keep out, in the event of a surge event, flooded waters from entering that canal system and overtopping some of those flood protection systems and existence. Secondly, one of the alternatives that we explored was road raising, and again, this is to the, to about five-point-eight foot elevation, which is a ten-year flood elevation. One of the potential disadvantages with this is when you elevate a road, then there could be potential spill over of floodwaters into surrounding properties, something I forgot to mention, for, in addition to the vertical lift gate, for all of these alternatives as well, we will, or we have proposed to incorporate live-in shoreline features, and I'll go into a little bit about that in a second. Advantage of raising the roads is that you have that transportation access during storm events, but then again, one of the, some of the major disadvantages is potential runoff to other properties, and this is the most disruptive of the alternatives in terms of the time, the cost, and the time, the amount of times that these railways won't be able to be used during construction. The third alternative that we explored was an earthen berm, so that is raising with a mound feature going around the bayou, and that would be a three-to-one slope on either side of it. One of the potential drawbacks with this is that you need a good amount of right-of-way space to do this. However, this allows for a lot of green, a lot of green infrastructure and live-in shoreline features as well. Because of that slope going on to the water side, there may be some impacts to existing mangroves, but if those can also be replanted and considerations made to disturb them to the least extent as possible. And then the fourth alternative is a hybrid of the earth berm and the T-wall, and the reason why we explore this hybrid option, along with some input from the public and other stakeholders, is that the right-of-way is not uniform in its space around the bayou, so some areas where you have wider right-aways are more conducive to the berm feature, and then others are more conducive to the T-wall where you have smaller spaces, and the edges of those T-walls can be buried into the berm. So this alternative proposes to implement these features complementary to each other where they make sense. And in doing a combination of the T-wall and the berm, you minimize disruption to mangroves if you were just going to do the berm itself, because with the T-wall, you don't have that expansive footprint heading into the waterways like with the berm. As I mentioned, for each of these, we'll be proposing a vertical lift gate at the bridge, and that will be, when there is not a storm event, it will be up to allow for navigation, and then it is designed to be closed within a relatively short space of time in the advance of a storm, and then that would be reopened once a storm passes, and that is to protect the, in the southeastern portion of the project area where you have those canals, to present, protect surge from entering those areas. And again, live-in shorelines is an important component that we want to integrate into all of these alternatives for a variety of reasons, for the natural and ecosystem benefits, the community benefits that they result in, and also many of the funding streams that we explore, live-in shoreline is certainly advantageous to making those applications more competitive. As I mentioned, we incorporated public feedback into analyzing feasibility of these options. This is a combination of results garnished from the public meeting as well as the online survey. The berm feature was the overwhelmingly the most favored alternative for its aesthetic reasons, for its ability to incorporate natural features, and also for the potential to incorporate recreational features, like potentially a walkway and some other things. Road raising came second, the T-wall was third, any combination of any of those, sorry, the T-wall was fourth, any combination, a hybrid alternative was third. Why we propose the T-wall versus road raising again is the disadvantages associated with road raising and potentially some drainage improvements that wouldn't have to be made at the property level and some connections, and the potential for unintended consequences of flooding, spilling over into properties, and then also costs, disruption, and et cetera. So next steps for the alternatives, again, one, because this is roughly split between county and city control, Pinellas County is arguably one of the most or the most important stakeholder in advance in this project, and as such, I know part of this process, we, Bob and the team and us, we met with the county sustainability and public works department, and they are generally supportive of this effort and see it as something good to do. But to advance this, definitely there has to be an increased level of coordination, and that would be advantageous, not just from scoping and designing this project, but also from the grant funding point of view. So some of the recommendations around that, to crystallize them a little bit more, is to build on the initial coordination meetings that we had and expand that to more applicable and effective departments on both sides, and then also investigate opportunities for mutual support on these applications, and that could be more informal support such as letters of support, but also potentially co-applying for grant funding where it makes sense. And then maybe going into some type of inter-local agreement that formalizes that partnership and outlines certain areas of responsibilities, how to share data, identify matching funds on both ends, et cetera, how to sequence and harmonize plans on the county and the city side, so on and so forth. And then another major recommendation is to implement the funding strategy that I'll go into shortly, and to complete a vulnerability assessment, which I know is already underway with some state funding, and I'll explain why that is important in a few seconds. And then also to start and continue collecting data, especially with the county's help who has a lot of relevant data sets that could help to inform this project. So in putting forth an application, the more complete data that you have, the more competitive that application will be. And then just continue the engagement with key stakeholders in the public and with government agencies at all levels as applicable. All right, so quickly on funding, there are a lot of funding streams, there are a lot of funding programs at the state level, at the federal level, that could be potentially applicable to this project. But just a quick snapshot at the federal level, the bipartisan infrastructure law that was recently passed has set forth a tremendous amount of money for upgrading infrastructure for resilience, and has focused on climate resilience, so things that do with coastal resilience, sea level rise, flooding, et cetera, and then also projects that deal with environmental justice issues, more socioeconomic, low-income type issues, et cetera, and equity. That bipartisan infrastructure law resulted in increased funding for two of the funding streams that could be applicable to this, from FEMA, which is the BRIC program, and also the FMA program flood mitigation assistance. It also set forth money for D O T grants, so that deals more with transportation infrastructure, but making that transportation infrastructure more resilient to climate hazards such as sea level rise, coastal storms, et cetera. At the state level, it's actually a very good time for state funding, there's unprecedented amount of funding for resilience and hazard mitigation coming from the state. Two, one of the main programs that is getting a lot of attention now is the Resilient Florida Program, of which I believe the city has received some planning funding for which to do its vulnerability assessment. That's really critical because without that, then you can't get the implementation projects, so those that move to construction. But even beyond the state program and the state funding, having that vulnerability assessment in place is key for many of these federal funding programs, whether or not it's specifically required, it makes it more competitive to see that that type of analysis has been done to date. So some of our recommendations around the, how to look into different funding options, continue with the data collection that will need to make sure you have as complete and as competitive an application as possible, that really involves cooperation with the county and their data as well. Complete that vulnerability assessment that I know is underway, that's specific to the state funding, but again, also sets you up for a more competitive application at the federal level for various funding streams. For some of FEMA's very competitive programs, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about the BRIC program that's been in place for the last two years, these programs are highly, highly, highly competitive. FEMA just announced awards for last year's application, and I think only fifty-three of the competitive, for the national competition grants, were fifty-three awards nationwide. So it's very competitive, and there are a few things that they look at, such as levels of protections that you're going for, and then also they have been favoring disadvantaged communities, economically and socially disadvantaged communities, for which the Witcomb Bayou project area has defined specifically the census tracts with the Justice Forty Initiative for which these programs find the disadvantaged communities are not within the project area, but there are some that are nearby. So these are very competitive, however, we live in Florida, so unfortunately, one of the things that are almost a certainty is that at some point, maybe before November thirtieth, there may be a federally declared disaster as a result of a hurricane or a tropical storm, and that sets you up, or that releases other funding such as the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is more controlled by the state in terms of awardees, and that gives you more chance of being funded as well. So we need to be ready for when that happens, and that could also release some HUD funding as well for a community disaster, block grant, disaster recovery funding and mitigation funding as well. And then for, at the individual property level, which we weren't really looking at for the alternatives, but there could be an opportunity to look at some of the NFAP insured properties, some of the severe repetitive loss and repetitive loss properties in the area should they exist, for some individual property mitigation options for those properties to complement what we're doing here, bayou-wise, and that could be elevation and some other things. And then stay abreast of all the developments at the federal level with the bipartisan infrastructure law, there is going to be significant funding coming out of that. So just a very quick snapshot of our project, there was a lot more detail in your, in your backup documents, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we get started, we're going to go to public comments first. We're done, Mr. Robertson, with the presentation? Okay. I do have a question for you. What is your, what are you looking for from us tonight? You and I had a brief conversation, you would like a vote, is that right, on picking one of the alternatives? Am I, am I wrong about that?
Yes, sir, we'd like that, and we'd also like permission to move forward with the grant application process and multiple options there. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to public comments. I wanted to clarify where the, the staff is looking for a, a direction by a form of vote this evening, so public comments, anyone that wishes to make a public comment.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Coburn, four-two-five South Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. Also, I'm here representing my parents who live next door at four-three-three, and they also own the Athena Apartments, which is from four-four-one to four-four-nine, which is the immediately affected property here on this. So I went through the backup, and I want to give you my thinking about some of these options. The road, the raising the road to me was the most frightening from a property owner's standpoint, because even in their comments, they say that there's a potential for runoff, rainwater and also seawater, if there's a flood event, into your property. So to me, and you know, and having cars driving, and it's really going to change your whole house, so to me, that is an option that I hope y'all don't even consider, is raising the road around the bayou. The only way to do that is if you offered a The only way to do that is if you offered low-interest loans to all the property owners to raise their houses, because otherwise, it changes everything. So, I hope you eliminate that option completely. I was really taken with the wall. I know most people didn't like it, but if you're living there and you're going to have three feet of water in your kitchen, the wall looks pretty good, because it works. But, you know, it's not the most attractive thing, which it can be made more attractive than just the concrete slab that's shown, which is computer easy, but it can be made more attractive. The only problem with that is you have the ramp, the boat ramp down there, and you'd have to relocate the boat ramp in order to make that completely effective, because otherwise you're going to get water coming through. Am I correct on that? That it would. So, but I like the wall, because it works. And I'm assuming that it's going to be at the height of the current mangrove, so it's really not going to change the view very much for property owners. You know, I know people that drive by might not like it that much, but it's still, you're not seeing more of the bayou than you ordinarily would. The berm is also a good option. I think it would be attractive. The problem that I feel might occur with the berm is you'll get runoff also from a berm, so you need a large area on the other side. I'm assuming it's also going to be at the height of the current mangroves, so that the people in these older homes are going to be able to see, because they're paying a lot of, you know, waterfront and water view taxes there. But, again, aesthetics comes second for a homeowner that's right on that road, because flooding does happen there, and I've experienced flooding in the 20-some-odd years we've bought our house, and I've lived on the bayous since I was in seventh grade. So, I've seen a lot there. And another point I want to make and present to Bob, when we have these hurricanes, the water does come in, but it goes out really quick. Are these, these measures that you're going to prepare there, are they going to affect the ability for the water to flow back out if we have a hurricane that throws a lot of water and a lot of water gets over? Because, again, it's not like the lakes up in Mississippi where the flooding sits there for weeks at a time. Yeah, you get flooded, but it goes back out. If what you're going to do is going to create a situation where the flooding's going to sit in the neighborhood and in these houses, that's not much of a solution. That doesn't solve our problem. So, I think most people wanted both the T-Wall and the berm features, and I think that's probably the most practical approach. At least, we have to do something, and it's a beginning. So, you know, probably that would be my recommendation if you didn't want to put a wall all the way around the bayou. So, the time may come when you'll have to, but Annie, are you willing to give me two minutes? Annie Simerkis will give me two more minutes. So, as far as the lift gate at the bridge, a couple of other things I thought about. The bayou used to be dredged when it was part of the channel, and it hasn't been dredged, and Mr. LaCrosse would know how long it's been. It's been a long time. Dredging in the bayou could happen, it could help, as far as how much water it can contain. It used to be done fairly regularly. It hasn't been done in at least 40 years, I would say. That's an option to be worked with everything else. You talk about a lift gate for the canals. Is it impossible down the road, probably not now, but down the road, to put a lift gate at Beckett Bridge? Or does that cause too much problems for the river? And the Ancklot River, mouth of the Ancklot River's pretty narrow. I know it sounds crazy, but, you know, in the Netherlands, they do it. Can you put a lift gate in that area and prevent a lot of the water to come through? These are big ideas, but they might end up being down the road. But for this particular thing, I would ask you to consider the T-Wall, berm combination. I would ask you to avoid raising the road. And what was the other one? There was a third one. Just the berms by themselves, I don't think that's practical either, because there's not the space around the bayou. So, I think you have to go with the combination. So, I tend to agree with that. I just hope it's not something that causes more problems than it solves, but we have to start someplace, and so I appreciate the fact that you're going through all this. And I thank you.
I'm confused where this lift gate is going, but I'm just going to look at the alternatives.
Ms. Ingle, could you pull that down just a little bit?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, so the T-Wall, I was looking at that. Yeah, it's pretty unattractive. Have we considered what that's going to do in terms of the noise with the cars, with the roads there? Is there going to be an echo coming off that wall and making it even more obnoxious? I'm just curious how bad that's going to be for those of us who want to sit on our patio. So, I don't know if a sound, if there's a sound study at all? Have we considered that? Okay. The road raising, I have the same comments that she did, what happens on the other side and the houses? I don't see how that's even an option here unless there's just something I'm missing. How do you do that when a lot of these houses are here and you raise the road? So, that just doesn't even make any sense, especially considering how narrow the pathways are. So, again, I just didn't understand how that was feasible. So, now we go to the earth berm, which sounds great, too. I don't know if anybody in your organization went and walked around, but there's sections where there's only 18 inches from the road and the waterway. That's my house. Anyways, so, so you, at that point, what do you do at the existing docks and everything else? Do you have us move all our docks back and take up more water space? Are you going to consult any of the property owners that have all those repairing rights and that kind of thing before you do that? Which I would probably say yes to, okay, but, you know, I think you have to talk to the people that actually own that to see, you know, see how that's going to affect them and what they think of that. And the hybrid looks like the best alternative. I didn't really understand about the gate to go in the docks. If that was absolutely foolproof, if you have a hurricane coming and a serious storm surge, I mean, how much pressure can those gates take? And if one breaks, then what happens? Does the whole wall explode, like it does in a house when the one window opens up, the entire house implodes? So, I don't know if we're considering all of these options in the event of a natural disaster. Is that what we're really talking about, which is not that likely considering the storm path, and it's been 100 years, and we're just really not in that path? But I understand contingencies. However, on the other side, it'd be a good idea to probably just go around to the property owners that live on the very low end and just have a talk with us. And I can tell you right now that two feet would do it right now, two feet, and it's not coming over, because I walk out on my dock, and I know how far it comes up at the peak of high tide on the storm surge on a new moon. So, if you go and you talk to those people rather than doing reports, you'd probably get some information that would be really useful and might postpone this vote tonight, because I don't know if you're going to elevate and do some different things. If it's not outlined in here how high you're going to go. So, that's not in here at all. So, I don't know what you're voting on if you don't have that kind of information in here. But I mirror what she said. It seems like if we have to vote tonight, that we would do the hybrid or something to that effect. Thank you.
Paul Robinson, 948 Bay Shore. I want to thank Mr. Robertson and Mr. Stewart for the two presentations they gave to our sustainability, your sustainability committee, quite clear and quite informative. I want to reinforce something that Mr. Stewart said about the living shorelines being a part of whatever you choose. You get a lot of bang for your buck with a living shoreline. The hard elements of the living shoreline are repopulated, colonized by bi-valves, they clean the water. The soft elements, usually smooth cord grass accretes soil and detritus and grows vertically over time. The living shoreline as a unit reduces wave action, giving longevity and giving a lifeguard life, and presents damage to whatever structure you pick on the shore side. And they create niches for marine creatures. So, they improve the water, they also, particularly the cord grass and the roots of the cord grass, absorb carbon dioxide, remove it from the air. So, there are about five advantages to living shorelines. Saturday night, I was part of a group of volunteers that put in the first phase of a living shoreline in Phillipi Park in Safety Harbor. And it's, you know, you're lifting 35 to 40-pound bags and just handing it to the next person, so that you're taking it from a pallet out into the water and then laying it in the water to create the hard portion of a living shoreline. About three hours of work by about, I would guesstimate, 50 volunteers, organized by Christine Joyner and Stacy Day and other members of the Pinellas County Environmental Management Team. It was a good time, and you can see it's work, but you can see what you're doing, and you know it's going to, something that will benefit the shoreline and benefit the water. As you know from previous conversations, the state has funded at least three living shoreline projects through grants, through Resilient Florida, I believe, in Pinellas County. The one in Phillipi Park, Gulfport Marina, and a very large project in Treasure Island. So, there will be people in the county who are familiar with doing this, with this kind of installation, and Christine has kind of verbally said, "We'll help you with our team when you get ready to put in your living shoreline in Tarpon Springs," or a series of them. One other thing I want to just mention, if you choose the earth and berm, which I think is that or the hybrid is the way to go, that's just, I'm speaking as an individual, consider using Florida native ground cover and Florida native plants rather than grass. Less maintenance, and it's better for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
David Ballard, Gettys Jr., Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. On average, we have a three-foot tide, between high and low tide here in our area, and the road doesn't flood, but just slightly at high tide, and it's more noticeable during a lunar, a high tide with a full moon. I don't believe that the barriers that are proposed are, I believe they're just speculative at best as to how effective those barriers are going to be. I think raising the road, not a total of five feet, but a total of three feet, which would bring that road three feet above high tide, would serve sufficiently for this project. And even though it might, we might have a road closure for a period of time, I think just a three-foot elevation on the road would provide what we need. As far as a living shoreline is concerned, we all know that our fiddler crabs on the beach have all disappeared. We need to pay attention, you know, to our living shorelines. Our oyster beds are gone, and, you know, that we do need to pay attention to. I think a wall barrier wouldn't serve a living shoreline as much as just simply raising the road a few feet would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gettys.
And in the executive summary, while the earth berm alternative was preferred by most of the public engaged, the hybrid earth berm and T-Wall was deemed the most feasible alternative for achieving the desired level of protection, blah, blah, blah. And we have a nice picture here, supposedly nice, I don't know. I'm not really fond of this wall. Personally, I think the earth berm, because if you really look at the picture, I don't know if we can go back to it, to this one, the hybrid. One, where along the Witcomb Bayou is this wall going to be? And also, it's kind of interesting, in the description, it says, "Three-to-four-foot roadway clear zone needed for pedestrian safety." There's a sidewalk already on the south side, or west side, or east side, depending on which part of Witcomb Bayou you go around, is where I don't see where you'd have people walking along that section of where the road is, whereas if you set up an earth and berm, you can create a wider walking space and enjoyment. The other thing that was kind of interesting, if you look at the T-Wall, it says, "Water-tight gate must be installed for each existing private dock, maintain, and be self-closing." So, are we going to put it on the property owners to maintain it, or will the city be maintaining it? The watertightness, what type of materials? Saltwater spray, rusts out, as Mary just mentioned earlier? You get some heavy storm, blows out the door? I don't know. I just am not favor in any regards of putting in a wall unless it's absolutely necessary. Also, in the backup, where it's on page, it's in the, talking, to follow up on Dr. Robertson's comments. Trying to find these pages where it matches up. I'm sorry. It must, oh, here it is. It's in the first section. Each of the proposed alternatives for shoreline encompasses element of a living shoreline. A greenway situated on top of the proposed earth and berm alternative provides another consideration for this project. Greenways can add value to surrounding properties. A greenway also provides an opportunity for Tarpon Springs to connect residents around Tarpon's, Witcomb Bayou and surrounding areas to Craig Park. The inclusion of a living shoreline may provide additional protection from wave action and would certainly provide ecosystem services that could augment the benefits captured as avoided losses within a benefit-cost analysis. A living shoreline may also enhance the competitiveness of the project as more funding programs seek to reward nature-based solutions. So, I would advocate for an earth and berm with the living shoreline. And the last thing I would like to say is, we haven't really talked about this vertical gate that's going to go at the Witcomb Bayou Bridge. Two big columns, a big gate, in fact, it's talked about there. The gate's going to be open most of the time, you got wind potential. But if you put a gate at the Witcomb Bridge, as it's mentioned, you're going to put a gate at Craig Park at the, where the boat launch is? Because that's open. Water has a thing of going to the lowest spot in the open spot. You ask any plumber that, and they'll tell you that. So, even if you block off the canals, it's still going to flow around through Craig Park. It's going to come back up over the spring bayou seawalls that we're talking about. I would rather keep the flow open and the minimization of any restriction of flows, because as we found out with the Lake Okeechobee and the dykes and all that stuff, that's where the problems start. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on the side, please name them for record. We do have, okay, the person just lowered their hand, so we do not have any raise hands this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lund.
Thank you. I actually have just a few questions. I believe, back in my memory, that the height of the T-Wall and the height of the berm and the height of the raised road were pretty much all the same in spec for five foot eight inches. Is that correct?
Five-point-eight feet, but yes.
Five-point-eight feet? Okay. I knew there was an eight in there somewhere. So, there are some concerns with view. I think the view is going to be the same whether you put a berm there, whether you put a T-Wall there, whether you raise- I think the view is going to be the same whether you put a Birm there, whether you put a T-Wall there, whether you raise the road. Everything's going up to five point eight feet. And so for those, some of the questions I'm asking are for the public's edification. So the view is gonna be the same, pretty much from all of them, except for the aesthetics of the actual mechanism that we use to block it. So you list various major advantages and disadvantages for each of the scenarios. One of the major disadvantages you listed for the T-Wall was reduced views, which obviously is, is not the case. So I, I think some of this needs to be sanitized. The idea of removing and replacing is flood control structures, I think that might have to be done with all of them. There is some concern about the gates that have to be accessible for people's docks and so forth. I think a heavier explanation on the type of gate would be warranted for the public at large because I know that they're pretty reliable. But I've done the research. It needs to be better expressed. As far as the road raising, I think just the cost and the function keeps it out of that. One of the major advantages listed was that the roads and access function during storm events. Well, from my conception, the T-Wall and the Birm are supposed to keep flooding off the road, so it's accessible. I happen to live in that area and if any of these mechanisms aren't accessible, then they're totally useless. It's, that road needs to be terrable. I think it's pretty much agreed from the, from the public comments we've heard that the Earth Birm is going to be one of the, the preferred methods of, of mitigating this. I see pictures here with the Earth Birm and I know there, there are artist conceptions and stuff like that. My understanding of this was that putting the Earth Birm up there is going to mean ripping out every palm tree that's on Witcombe at this particular time. That we can't go and replant palm trees on this Earth Birm because it negates the structure of the Birm itself. Is that correct?
I don't think so. I mean, we're even showing some that's still remaining.
Yeah, I honestly don't think we've studied that intently. I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay, that was, that was something that I discussed with one of your people, I think, earlier on in the process. But I think it's notable that the public wasn't generally aware that if you put in this Birm, there's a limit to what you can plant on this Birm. So I wanted to bring that up. So all of them compromise views. I think from a funding perspective, that because of, just because of the size of this project, the city's been asked for a grant manager for so long that we may just put one just on this project and continue to carry him on with the city because that's, we're talking about a lot of money. I'm particularly not impressed with the idea of a vertical lift gate. I understand the importance of protecting the canals behind it. But all of us who live on the water in Tarpon Springs are subject to raising water. All of us who aren't on that particular sense have had to do things like raise seawalls. I mean, it's happened in my neighborhood continually for the last six years, including my property and several adjacent properties. I would be more of a, more attuned to the idea that was kind of buried within the, in the minutia of the, of the, of the project, that, that we have a seawall ordinance for those people that live behind that particular bridge. That means that, you know, if the seawall rise, or the, the water rises and they have to repair their seawalls or they have to do damage, they have to repair and raise their seawalls. I think that's pretty much expected of everybody who has a seawall on any bayou and, and the whole of Tarpon Springs. So I think those are considerations that we, we need to take into consideration when we develop a plan moving forward. And lots of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, I think Alternative Three, the Earth Birm is the way to go. I could see Alternative Four being used as well, too, but in my opinion, I think the Earth Birm is the way to go. We could replace the mangroves if we need to as part of the living shore. Appreciate the public comments on that as well, too. Couple of things I want to touch base with of the vertical lift gate, and maybe you could share with that. So the county is replacing the bridge to be a draw, or an open bridge, not a fixed bridge. So if we put a lift gate here, it, it doesn't look like that will also lift when the bridge lifts, if I'm looking at it correctly. So I would have some concerns if boats could actually get under the lift gate at the Beckett Bridge.
I think you're confusing the bridges. This is, this will be at the Witcombe Bridge.
Witcombe Bridge?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's a no-brainer, then.
So, and, and this lift gate would be proposed to be as high as the lowest point of the bridge, so navigation would be maintained.
At the Beckett Bridge?
Not Beckett.
All right. Clears it up, then.
There we go.
It's an expensive lift gate.
Yes, it is.
And that prevents water from going into Ultra-19 because I know that connects to the, the storm drains and you'll see that on Ultra-19 at times, too. So I could see the importance of that. I would support the lift gate in that aspect. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. The maintenance of a hundred thousand dollars is proposed, is that just kind of like a wag, or is that?
Yeah, that's an estimate.
How does the Birm, how do you prevent the Birm from being eroded if the, if the Birm option is the way to go?
It's a combination of reinforcement built into the Birm as well as, you know, erosion controls vegetation on the top. But ultimately, it's a, it's a maintenance item. You have to continue to monitor it and maintain it.
Okay. So if you could go to the picture with the Birm, I think it is, on this county, yep, that one. So that's County Road on the bottom left, and it looks like it's putting more dirt into the bayou and creating the Birm. Is that part of the application is to apply for the mango removal, adding more dirt where historically it had been? And then making it solidified so the road doesn't fall into the bayou and then also the bayous don't come into the road? Am I understanding that correctly?
That would be part of the design and permitting phase, but yes, for sure.
I think that's the best-case scenario in this situation. Let me ask you something, from a stormwater standpoint, when you have the Birms there and the water isn't gonna run off the road into the bayou, I mean, it's, like, it's, it prevents pollutants from going into the bayou, but where does the water go at that point?
So this project would have to include modifications for drainage to allow for swales that would fall along the road there till you get to a point where it can positively discharge to the bayou when the tides are low.
Got it. Okay.
Just like a normal situation. But in this case, all the outfalls would have the, the tide flex check valves to prevent the tide from coming through.
Okay. The county seemed to be open to having this comment, like, to jointly apply for this?
Yes.
I understand the, the T-Wall. I struggle with it. I would rather see a Birm there across the board instead of a T-Wall. Especially the county, and a lot of the county portion, there's, on the west side, it's very narrow. And that would just be a tough spot to have a wall along the roadway right there. So I think from an aesthetic standpoint and from livability and the way it could help the environment, I think the living shore is the way to go, the Earth Birm, the Earth Birm's the way to go. And then I could support the, the vertical gate at the MLK Bridge.
The floodgate, yes, sir.
I think if there's anything else, real quick. That's it, Mayor.
That's it?
Yep.
Commissioner Carr, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just did want to speak first about the, this lift gate that's only seventy, seventeen to thirty million dollars. What do you do with the Cremer Bayou, where the water would come up over the Cremer Bayou, travel down Riverside and come back and refill right through the RV Park?
That's a pretty broad question, but I think what we're trying to do is, is address one area at a time. It's hard to address resiliency citywide, so that would probably be another phase of another project.
So we would be spending thirty million dollars or, or about just to protect one area? Okay, let, let me ask you, why are the doors on the wrong side of the wall?
The doors, we have to open out, so water pressure would push them in to seal. And they're located at all the locations where there are docks.
So they look like they're on the side of the residence?
Well, they're accessible that side and maybe the rendering isn't quite clear, but that, that's how they would function.
Okay.
Out, open towards the water.
So they open towards the water?
Right.
Okay. So if somebody were to leave their door unlocked or a door breaks, who's responsible for that?
It would be the city responsible for maintenance of those.
Because any one of the doors that breaks, the whole wall's useless, is it?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm not in favor of this at all. There's just too many ways that it would be a very expensive project that would not give us the security. You can't really stop Mother Nature. You can minimize the amount of damage from high tides, but you cannot stop Mother Nature. I've watched this with my own eyes. I've lived through Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy. I heard somebody say something about how much the sound would be for the wall. It would be tremendous. It would reverberate all the car noise back at the people. They would not be able to sleep. It would sound like a highway. So, and I know that also because we use walls on highways to restrict the noise from the highway to residential. So this would work in reverse. So I'm not, again, I'm not in favor of that. I, I've looked at all of these which ways and shapes and forms that water could come in and I see that the Earth Birm alternate three, alternative three, rather, is probably the least expensive and most value that we can get out of the bang for the buck, in my opinion. I really, I'm not fond of the wall at all. I, I think that if we use the Birm, it would be the best. But the only concern I have is that water that comes in from natural resources from the sky has a way to get back through the burn. So I would presume we would have to put check valves and possibly drainage all the way around because otherwise we'd be, just be flooding people's houses again the other way.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, those are the ways that I see that this would work. I don't know if we would have to raise the roadway in a couple of spots, even to make like a, a bump or a hump so that water wouldn't come in through the, you know, Cremer Bayou area. Because, you know, if we get a five, three-foot, four-foot surge, that's gonna be bad. I know that right now it's about two-foot that we deal with. When we have those king tides, that's when that goes underwater. But really, we don't get anything more than two-foot, you know, high tide. So I, I'm leaning towards number three. I think it's the least amount of funds that we would spend and get the most impact. I'm into a living shoreline. Have we looked at all at putting the plastic, the interlocking plastic out onto the dock? Not, not where the boats are, but maybe three, four feet in so that it would give us that five-foot height? You know, like a regular bulkhead would do.
Oh, I see. Like the FRP seawalls or something?
Yes.
That wasn't really considered as, as part of this project. We're looking for the, the more robust solution.
And if, if you looked into it, would that be something that we could at least get a price and to see if it would hold? Because you can easily put, you could put that in at, at a much cheaper rate, drive it in, cause nobody any interference, and you could actually dredge or put a, a natural Birm on the other side of it.
Potentially. That is something that could be looked into. That would be a version of the wall, though, just so you know. It would look very similar if we set the elevation at five point eight feet.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about just leaving it high and, and unsightly. I would be talking about, you know, we're speaking about dredging as well, or doing a Birm, putting, you know, product on the other side, just giving it a little bit of a firmer stancher, you know, against what could come.
I understand.
And it wouldn't allow the Birm to run back into the, into the bayou. I'm, I'm just, it's something to look into, that's all I'm saying. Right now, I'd be going for route, you know, for Alternative Three. But I, I would like to hear what that would cost versus these and, and hear how that might help versus this.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just talking there. That would be very similar to a T-Wall in cost. So these are all falling in that same kind of seven to ten million dollar range for the parts of the project that are not the lift gate.
I hear you. Well, the lift gate, I'm not in favor of at all, like I said. That's, you, unless you put a lift gate out at the Ant Claude, you know, inlet, you're not stopping that water from coming. It's coming one way or another. And it comes, in a surge, it comes in so quick, there's, there's nothing you could do. You could just watch it come in, so. That's all I really want to say. I, I just, I, I don't want to see a lift gate and I don't really would, would go with a, a natural Birm. That's the route I would go. Thank you.
Commissioner Cullias.
Thank you, Mayor. How far around the bayou does this project go? Does it start from the boat ramp south and it'll stop at that intersection where the roundabout?
No, it'll, it'll go all the way back around the, the whole U shape of, of Witcombe Bayou.
Oh, wow. Basically to the start of Gulf Road?
Yes.
Okay, now I see why the, the cost is really high. This, I know this project's been presented at a ten-year plan and flood plan and we discussed it a little bit. But the reason why we're not trying to plan beyond a ten-year plan is basically the aesthetics around it and the, the height that can come with it that won't be aesthetically pleasing to the, the bayou area.
And cost.
And cost, okay. I believe we, we would all have to keep in mind that this project, you know, its useful life is fifty years. So it's, it's here to take care of us currently, but also future generations. So with that said, is there an option that you recommend between three and four that will allow to build up on the progress that's already been made with either interlocking of a T-Wall levee system or extending the Birm?
The answer is yes. Either of those, three or four, can be augmented later, should we need to or want to. T-Wall can be extended and Earth Birm can be built up.
Okay. And if a, a T-Wall is built sort of by this, the boat ramp over by Craig Park, is it, does that boat ramp have to go away? Does it, you know, can it stay?
No, boat ramp can stay, yeah.
And the, the riprap that we, that's currently on the bayou, the option that the Birm has the ability to take out some of that riprap and maybe extend some of that land out into the, the water technically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'd like to ask, what do you recommend?
From the options presented?
Yeah.
Well, for one thing, I think it's important to, well, you touched on a good point. One, One, I mean, in an ideal world, you would want to protect to a higher level flood event. Feasibility-wise, because of the compromising of views, because of the costs, and because of the extent of where you need to protect, it may not be feasible to do so. I also think it's, just me speaking myself, I think it's important to, I think one of the commissioners touched on it, that water's gonna come in regardless. So we're trying to, and the way we calculate, so for example, the benefit cost ratio to make this competitive by federal funding standards is you're trying to mitigate as much as you can avoiding those losses and reducing those damages. So there's no one solution, especially with the limitations that we have in terms of level of protection that we can go to, that can be that perfect solution. So there are some trade-offs inherent in all of these. And we're just trying to get to the point that agrees with the community character and what the residents want to see, but that can also mitigate some of those damages that you would expect in some of these storm events. But you're not gonna stop everything.
Okay.
Yeah. And if, and to answer your question, I think the confluence of all of these different factors, and especially what the community wants to see, is probably a combination or something that includes that earthen berm.
Okay. And we've all talked about this lift gate. The importance of it is to stop water coming into that canal area?
Into the canal and beyond.
And beyond. The check valves that will be installed should be able to cover any storm surge coming from underneath?
So their purpose is to prevent tide from coming up into the, you know, up into the stormwater system during high tides?
Thank you both. My recommendation is to go with a hybrid. I think they'll be able to consult and decide where, you know, portions of it can and can't go. But I also think that, you know, this is a big project, and there's gonna be additions down the road in the future. So we need to try to have those expectations, you know, whether it's, you know, sea level rise, or it's, you know, cyclical seasons that are causing this higher level water rise. So I would, I would be in support of a hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Sorry, a couple of things to follow up on. The gate at the small bridge, how, would that be pretty high to where like you wouldn't be, if you go over the bridge, you wouldn't be looking over at the bayou, then at that point you're obstructed by the gate?
It most likely would block the view as you drive over the bridge, yes.
All right. And then from a funding standpoint, you touched on that a couple of times about federal funding and state funding. Is it, makes sense to go after the federal funding first, or to do a combination between the two, or what's the approach?
Yeah, not necessarily. I mean, we would do, there are a multi-layered approach of leveraging various funding sources, and you can also potentially do it for various components of the project. So for example, I think there was a comment about, and, you know, maybe doing some bumps in the road or something.
Sure.
I highlighted some DOT grants that are for transportation infrastructure to make them more resilient to coastal hazards. So we would, and some of these funding programs, the, especially with the DOT ones, the guidance hasn't been released yet, the NOFOs haven't come out yet. But what we try to do with, and we've been very successful in doing so, is try to align the needs of the project and the timelines of the project to align with the timelines of the various funding streams, based on what you want to achieve. So it would be a combination of state, federal, and other sources that we could leverage. And then also, you know, in harmonization with what the county is trying to do as well.
Okay, so let's say, for instance, we, the city wouldn't, the city got federal funding, but they didn't get maybe state funding for the project. Could the project still move forward then with the federal funding? Enough of it, you think, or how would that fall?
Yeah. I mean, it could move forward, and there you could, in subsequent funding cycles, apply for more funding.
Additional funding cycles for the next year, for example? Okay, that's a key to, I think, this process, is being able to get funding year after year, which is great. Okay. The touch base in the docks, I think it's imperative to have the city maintain those doors, and that it's not a private maintenance at all. So if the berm route were to go, you still had to have those dock doors there, right?
Yes.
I mean, regardless, if a T-wall or a dock, or a berm.
Well, no, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. If it was all berm, then we wouldn't have T-walls, and you wouldn't have the doors. To access the docks, homeowners would have to go over the berms.
Okay.
And so the docks might have to be adjusted so they match up with the berm.
Got it.
So that's obviously something that has to get worked out in design.
Okay, so that's the design function. I'm curious to see how that one works out for sure. But this is a legacy project. It's been said this for many, many years. It's something that has to be done in this area, a lot of low areas. I mean, you can see where Virginia goes into Woodcombe Bayou. It's flooding. You'll drive through that flooded area on a, what's it, what's it, blue-sky flooding? End of MLK and South Spring, again, blue-sky flooding. Polis and Woodcombe Bayou, blue-sky flooding. When you come around the other side, towards Cleveland and Gulf Road, there's blue-sky flooding there, too. So this is something that needs to be addressed. I think this is a great step forward, and I'm looking forward to supporting it.
Thank you.
Hybrid. That's my choice. My point is, there's a lot of things we're talking tonight, and they're excellent questions, but they're not gonna get solved tonight. And you need something at the Woodcombe Bridge, or else the water's gonna come in through the canal, up over the seawall, and back right down into Spring Bayou again. So, I mean, Spring Boulevard, and same thing for Woodcombe Boulevard. So something has got to be there. There's ADA issues. We're not gonna be able to put a berm and just have somebody climb up the hill and go back down to their dock again. That's city property, unless we're talking about it's some kind of a hill-climbing trail or something like that. But there's gonna have to be almost a flat area through there, and it's city property. A gate's gonna be maintained by the city. I mean, I, you're, there's no liability, no responsibility on the part of the residents. I'm not sure if five-foot-eight, is that measured from the crown of the road, or am I from the mean sea level?
Mean sea level, yeah. Mean sea level.
Oh, that's not bad.
Right. So most of the time you're talking about something not much higher than the days.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's good. That's good. Oh, who owns the bridge? Is that the county?
I think we do.
The city property.
The county bridge, so this lift gate would probably be, have to be an agreement by the county to, we'd have to work something out as far as how that's gonna work, as far as the maintenance.
That's city road.
No, it's a city road, but the bridge itself.
Paul's saying it's, yeah, the city owns it.
City-owned bridge?
I believe so.
That's a city road. That section is a city road.
Oh, Paul said that's city road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll be our lift gate, then.
Let's give it to the county.
That's disappointing. I'm telling somebody outside, I mean, if you start looking at the lift gate, you might find that it's better just to redesign the bridge with this built into it or something like that. I, you know, but my point is, you gotta cross that road when you get to it. So my choice for this evening, if this is what you want, and we're looking for, we're gonna have a motion tonight, we've got a vote on it, is a hybrid. I don't see how you can get strictly by with just a berm without some kind of a wall for providing access to the docks and some other areas where the distance from the edge of the water to the curb is not, it's way too narrow to put in a berm. Of course, you could, you can say, okay, well, we're gonna impact the mangroves, but then you're gonna wind up having to get fill permits, which I doubt that we're gonna be able to get in that area anyway. So that's my choice for this evening. And, but we're gonna have to have a, we did public comments. We're gonna have to have a motion and a second as far as the approach. And if you want something other than a hybrid, go ahead and make a motion, and see if you can get a second. If you get a second, then we'll do a vote and see if it passes. And if not, then we'll move on to the hybrid, or however y'all want to do it. So I need a motion on something, so we can get this evening moving. Go ahead. One more question. You made mention that the boat launch would be fine the way it is. I'm having problems with that. Because it would have to, if that water came up a foot or two feet, it would come right down Spring Street and come the bad way.
I mean, this is something that we'll certainly have to double-check in design, but the crest of that ramp, I believe, is already at the elevation necessary. So the ramp would obviously be able to maintain. It might need an adjustment as part of the project. Maybe, you know, there's some parking lot adjustments to hit that elevation. But I don't believe there's any major adjustments necessary, but it's something we'll look at when we get into final design. Understand, this is all preliminary design work, so those details have not been worked out yet.
But without having that knowledge, it's very hard to go and vote tonight on something, because you can have a situation where if you can't raise it, then when you have water, you could have it going up towards Tarpon Avenue. I'm not saying up all the way to Tarpon Avenue, but you could flood out the people in all, in the fruit section.
I really don't think that's gonna be an issue, and if it is, it's something we can address easily.
Well, I'm not talking about from salt water. I'm talking about from rainwater, 'cause it's gotta run down towards the Gulf.
Oh, I see.
You understand? I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, if you keep building up to accommodate, then where do you get the water to drain back?
Again, the same way with the drainage improvements and check valves, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing is, I just also don't know how you're going to, around the bayou, there is, you know, Cleveland Place in and around there, that's all private homes. What are you doing there?
Cleveland Place.
It's, it's a little.
North of Gulf?
There's a house up for auction right there. It's a brick house on the corner.
I'm not sure, Commissioner. I'd have to look into that.
Right, but that is all, that would all come back and around the Woodcombe Bayou. If, you know, so how would you be doing that? There is a wall there already around people's property. I think it's the backside of Innis Drive.
Innis Drive, okay.
You know, these are all factors that we would probably need to have all of what you were gonna do before, at least before I make a decision. That's for the next phase.
Yeah, that's the design action.
I mean, that's, you're not gonna get those answers in this phase. And my point is, that all they're looking for is which approach do you want to take? And they'll start, you know, and then we'll give that direction, and then we'll start getting answers to the specific questions that you're raising. And I'm, I'm an engineer. I've got, you know, we put people on the moon. I don't have any doubts that we can address this sort of stuff. It's just, we need to give them a chance to be able to give answers to your questions. And I've got the Arcatis, as far as I'm concerned, is one of the world's leading experts in this area. And that's why they're on board here. And they're gonna come back and say, Mr. Eisner, you're right. You know, we can't do it this way. Or they're gonna give you the answer. I'm hoping that's what they're gonna say. Or they'll come back and give you a solution to what you're describing. I'm not so sure. I mean, you could put flood walls around the boat ramp as well. I'm not, you know, there's a variety of ways that we could deal with that. So right now, all we're looking is selecting a, an approach to allow them to work towards that and then get answers to the questions that we're having this evening. That's all.
Mayor, can I make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to suggest the earth berm, alternative three, with the, as minimal use as a hy, the hybrid portion of it for the docks, and to include, what's the gate called? The gate, the vertical gate? Flood gate?
The flood gate, yes.
Yeah. The lift gate. And then include the lift gate as well. So to clarify, it, I would, it's really to do the earth berm everywhere, except where the docks are, to give the staff the flexibility to come up with a better idea, so they don't have to climb the hill, and to use the vertical lift gate.
That's a motion. Do we have a second? And then we'll have additional comments if you want. Does there anybody who wants to make a second for discussion? Okay. There's no second. Motion dies. Now, is there another motion? Motion to proceed with alternative for hybrid earth berm and T-wall with investigation into baffling the T-wall, if we can, and looking into the possibility of seawall ordinance for those properties behind the bridge. Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second to that motion? No second. Is there another motion? Let me just interject. Let's keep it simple for this evening. Either one, two, three, or four.
Alternative four as an option.
Did he get a, he didn't get a motion? How many motions? No, no. Is there a second to that motion?
What was the motion?
Alternative four.
Alternative four, which is the combination of the berm and the wall.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other comments?
I think that's the best approach. Let's let them decide where the T-wall should go, where the berm should go. Let, you know, decide everything.
Last call on comments.
I think we should look into baffling the.
Okay, well, that's not in the motion unless you want to amend it. I just, for this evening's sake, I respectfully request we just keep it simple and let our consultants come back with some answers. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliasz?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Black?
Yes.
And everybody here.
Yes, thank you for everyone's cooperation. Now, let's go to item sixteen, which is the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Spring Boulevard intersection configuration. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Yes, proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Alcorz. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Keep this one super brief. We're asking the board to authorize staff to proceed with one of two options for improving the intersection, the intersection of MLK and South Spring Boulevard. The first option is a standard four-way stop. The second option is a mini roundabout. Both options include raising the elevation of the intersection with drainage and safety improvements. We got some public input on this project from an in-person meeting, as well as through the city's Connect Tarpon Springs online portal, where we found that just about sixty percent of residents, or just over sixty percent of residents, prefer to four-way stop, and forty percent prefer to roundabout. We're holding the project design right now at sixty percent complete, which is about as far as we can go, without the final intersection configuration decision that I'm hoping we can get to tonight. So with tonight's decision, we'll progress the design quickly, with the goal of putting the project out to bid as soon as possible. We want to try to stay ahead of the Beckett Bridge project and get this under construction ASAP.
That's an excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Is that it on the presentation?
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay. Public comments. Ms. Clemens, Ms. Colburn, excuse me.
I'll be quick. I want you to do the four-way stop, because it's safer for people to walk. There's, it doesn't make it a complicated intersection. It, the walkway doesn't put everybody that wants to cross in the man's yard that's right on the side of the bridge. It allows ambulances, fire trucks, all those emergency vehicles to progress and know where they stand in the, in the area versus crossing, 'cause they can't fit. It's just a nightmare to put the roundabout. I'm asking you not to do it. And just, I think it'd be great, and I'm looking forward to not having flooding down there, so I hope y'all get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn.
It's pretty simple. Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue, the four-way stop makes the most sense. This is a very functional intersection, even as it stands on its own. The realignment will make it a little more functional. The bigger problem has always been the flooding. So keep the four-way, just address the elevations and the, maybe the, like, the way the diagram looks, it looks a little more efficient for the crossings, but we don't need a roundabout there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis.
Anita Frodos, 901 Bayshore Drive. I suggest that with school starting tomorrow.
Need a protest 901 Bay Shore Drive. I suggest that with school starting tomorrow, all of you go see the intersection there because it's going to take over a year for the bridge to be completed. I was told down county it can take up to a year and a half to two years. And when you start going in a roundabout with all the people going to the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school, forget it. They'll be going round and round and turn into butter because they're going to be dizzy.
It's true.
So, a four-way stop is the way to go. The ambulance, the school buses and everything, and let's not make butter going around in a circle for all the parents and the children. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone would like to talk on the side, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, IT. Vice Mayor Lunt, I'm going to go... I'm sorry. Comments? We've got public comments. Vice Mayor Lunt, let me just go down the line real quick.
It's... I'm for the four-way stop. The roundabout makes no sense.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, real quick. I'm an advocate for roundabouts, for sure. I have an understanding that I don't think we're ready to accept roundabouts as a community, which is totally fine. I support the four-way stop. It's an important area. A four-way stop works for me. I'm just happy that we're going to address the flooding in this area and this intersection.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I've never been for the roundabout. It's a four-way stop, but the only thing I would add to that is coming off the bridge, it should be a right turn only and not have it go to Pineapple or to South Spring. That's my only add-on.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kuyas?
The residents know how I feel about it. I mean, just a four-way stop sign makes the most sense. Thank you.
All right. I'm not going to tell you how I'm going to vote. Can I have a second? A motion and a second, please.
For a four-way stop and give the...
Stop? Commissioner Carr, okay, second.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay.
You told us how you're going to vote now.
All right, let's move on to item 17. Ms. Vincent, your turn.
Just as she's coming up, we had a lot of time, but really, we're looking at a direction. We've been listening since April. We've been talking to boards. We've been talking to commissioners. We've identified some things we need to do with the comprehensive plan and development code. This is an outline of what we've come up with and a timeline that Renee is going to present. I know a lot of these items, there could be a lot of discussion, but really, we're just looking forward tonight to proceed on these and bring these back before you, where we can have in-depth discussions and mold it to the way that this board wishes to mold it, so.
So, yeah, I don't have a ton more to discuss. There's really a total of eight issues. You did receive an addendum in the backup last week, late last week. You've really had discussions already on six of the eight of these issues. The only two things that really have been added that are somewhat new are the conditional use review criteria and addressing public health, safety, and welfare that has actually been discussed publicly a little bit. And then the second is the kind of the difference in hotel heights versus the overall heights in the SMART code. And so, I've added both of those to the list of things to address. There was over 60 pages of backup, so I can't expect to go into this in detail tonight. But if you have some specific questions, high-level things that I can answer tonight, I'll be happy to. I'll also make any time available to you to talk one-on-one on these. If you want to provide direct input, I appreciate that. So, with that, I'll stop.
Let me just add to the discussion so far in the presentation. The whole idea behind these is to go on record that these ordinances are going to be changed. So, when that applications come in, that may need approval through one of these, for example, the hotel by right in the transect T-5C can go four to six stories by height. This kind of puts into question that ordinance and that that application would not be processed until we got that ordinance resolved as far as what we wind up doing. My suspicion is on this board, speaking a little bit out of turn, that I don't think we're going to leave the four to six stories in place. Mrs. Vincent doesn't have the ordinances or the framework or anything in front of you, but she understands what the, at least, the policy and the discussions that we've had moving forward. So, she's going to be taking that and creating ordinances to bring back, and she's provided that timeline in the backup. And also, she's extending an opportunity to you, for you to have private discussions with her to express any specific concerns you might have. Like, for example, Vice Mayor Lunt brought up his concern over fences. And I looked for a definition of a wall. I couldn't find it, but I think those are the sort of things that we need to work through in these things going forward. So, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this matter? Okay. IT, are there any comments? IT, remote access? Go ahead.
And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Okay, let me go to comments. Before I go that, Ms. Vincent, I know we're running a little short of time, but in the very first part of your presentation, can you go over the eight just roughly, please?
Sure.
So, everybody understands.
Sure.
It's being recorded, and I'm sure they're going to hear it.
Absolutely. So, number one would be the conditional use provisions for the residential uses and residential as secondary uses. That's in reference to the commercial land use designations in the comp plan. Number two is the conditional use review criteria specific to public health, safety, and welfare. Number three would be the coastal high-hazard area policies of the comprehensive plan. Number four is the mandatory annexation for utilities issue that we've been discussing. Number five are the actual application and review processes where we have multiple applications for a project. So, what's the order of operations? Separating land use and zoning applications and things of that nature. Number, let's see. That was number five. Number six is the tweaks to the mobile food truck ordinance to allow those as temporary uses for like special events, birthdays, and things of that nature. Number seven is to create a process where we can require developers to pay for the services that we provide for stormwater review since we consult that service out. And then the last one is the looking at the heights in the SMART code overall and the difference between the hotel height allowance and the regular height allowance in those transect districts and squaring those up in one form or another. There's a circular reference there now. We want to eliminate that circular reference.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Wow, okay. So, I tried to read through 60 pages.
It's a lot.
And quite frankly, burned out during the process. So, I'm going to keep it pretty simple. I don't even know where to start on this, actually. As far as evaluating the conditional use provisions, you know I'm not a fan of conditional use. I'm not a fan of warrants. I think we ought to sort of stick more to our guns. I'd like to see proposals brought forward to us and to the P&amp;Z board where we take a stance from the planning department of this is the pros and these are the cons with an eye to the city more than the developer. I've seen too much sort of, you know, this is how the developer can make this work. So, that's something I think we need to address. As far as the future land use elements, I think we're going to be going through them anyway, aren't we? So, I think they need to be... I don't have all of them in my head, so I think they're going to... We're going to have to sit down and go through a session where we discuss it in much more detail. As far as secondary uses, I think there was a question here whether primary uses take precedence over secondary uses. I think for me, from my viewpoint, that's a big yes. I think secondary uses should be restrictive rather than just meet a condition and you've got it automatic. It's... I don't like that idea. I don't like the idea that we have conditional uses in there where we don't have a choice if they've done it a certain way. I think that makes us make harsh decisions sometimes, and I think it makes us make decisions that are, I don't know, not the best at the particular time. So, you know, conditional and secondary uses, I think, need to be discussed for sure. I don't have a lot of detail on... Like I said, I drowned during this whole thing. So, I'm going to hold my comments for now and get my act together here. Thanks.
You okay for right now? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just want to, for clarification with the hotel height, what we were talking about in a meeting before was a T-4A versus, and then, I'm sorry, T-4A, and then we're talking about T-5. I just want to make sure...
Right, the special area plan has the four to six. The transect 5C only allows three stories. Is that right?
Three.
So, one of the ideas was three stories with a four stories conditional use in the special area plan for... I think that's correct. Is that right?
Yeah, right now, the way that it was drafted, in the special area plan, which is kind of like the land use piece of this, each character district, it calls out a special height allowance, and it says hotels shall be allowed a height of four to six stories. But then it says after that, "As to be further, you know, defined in the land regulating plan." Well, then, when the SMART code was drafted, it actually refers back to the special area plan. So, we've got a very circular reference with no real definitive way of how do we deal with that extra height. Is it permitted? Is it conditional? We want to clean that up and address it.
Okay. So, I mean, the concern I have is that the T-5C encompasses the old Pappas building and the parking lot there. So, if there is an option to do a six-story building there, I don't know how many stories. Was it three or four right now? And then there's a lot of height in the stories themselves, so technically, the same height could be a six-story building potentially as well, too. So, that's the only thing. I don't want to restrict like that area of Tarpon, the area that's on the west side of the Sponge Docks. I totally understand restricting that. You're in a neighborhood setting. You're then seeing it from Chesapeake across the water. There's some other issues, but as you're on Alt.19 towards the river area, I think there needs to be some more flexibility to encourage what the city would like to see with some type of lodging area. So, I think that's important to capture.
I think, if I may suggest, just work with Ms. Vincent because all of us have different ideas in that regard, and it's going to wind up coming down to a vote or whatever she's got as far as the ordinance goes, so.
I just want to put it out there.
I understand, yes, thank you.
And I understood the T-4. I understood the T-4, and when we said T-5, it just kind of threw me a little bit, so I wanted to make sure I understood what was going on.
I think Pappas is technically a two-story building right now. That's all that is, is just the ground floor and the second floor. There is no third. There's a basement. I mean, below the main floor.
They classify the roof as a third floor.
Or me?
They classify the roof as, that's their third floor. That's... They use that roof. That's, I'm just saying.
No, that roof...
Yeah, the roof actually has an adjunct part that's actually inside.
That's the second floor.
No, that's the third floor.
Third floor. No? Well, okay. I know it's been a long time since I've been there. Whatever. We're not going to deal with that tonight.
We're going to have a tour to the Pappas.
Carr, is there anything else?
Yeah, annexations, I think, is important that that's addressed in this aspect. I get the frustration, a project, mid-project coming through for annexations, but it is still really important for any project that's on the fringe of Tarpon Springs to have them annexed into the city. They're using the services of the city of Tarpon Springs. The city of Tarpon Springs needs those tax revenues. Don't let that tax revenue go to the county. So, there's permit and there's tax revenue that you want to make sure you're capturing. Food trucks, special events makes complete sense, and they should be able to have a food truck at their birthday party anywhere in the city. And then, if we're talking about conditional uses, I mean, I think adult nightclubs or adult clubs should all be by conditional use and no right at all throughout our city in any regard. I'm looking forward to talking with you about some other items.
Is that it, Commissioner Carr?
For now.
Commissioner Eisner?
I'm going to go back to, I'm going to work from the bottom up, so we're going to do the heights first. I don't have an issue with 50 feet as long as it's on 19 or on Alt.19 where we were looking to put that hotel. I didn't even understand how they could have a T-5 right next to a T-4, and it's just like a little hill street was between it. It made no sense to me, but that's the way it is. But yet, there is discrepancy there because if you look it up, which I did today, the WD-1 allows for that 50-foot, but the T-4 does not. Then, there's also another discrepancy that we have to clear up, which I'm happy to clear up, is it calls for two to three stories with an occasional taller building. What does that mean? What is taller? Is that four stories or is it 44 stories? You know, it's so vague. We really have to make sure that we know exactly what it means because people can misconstrue the wording, and everybody has their own interpretation. So, I do think we need to work on that. Working back up, the developers should pay. I'm in agreement with the food, the mobile food trucks. I think unless we have a meeting with the county on annexing, we annex already-built locations. So, to put a restriction on an annex that is maybe in the early stages and just blocked out and then say, "Oh, no, because you blocked it," now, you know, I'd rather get to a point where our permit department gets it as soon as they possibly can because, like I said, we do annex regular finished-in, you know, projects that are five years old, 10 years old. They could be 20 years old, and we still take them in as annexed. So, from new construction, unless we can make a deal with county, we still have to take them in the way it is. I do think we should be not having anything built in coastal high-hazard areas.
Nothing?
Well, when I'm saying... I'm talking about large projects that lean on...
Understood.
That lean on wetlands and things like that. That's what I'm talking about.
Understood.
Okay. Glad you got me to clarify my statement.
That was pretty broad, sir.
Nothing to be built anywhere on top... No, I'm just kidding. The... We have to be more definitive in what a conditional issue is because, again, that's something, you know, to go from a commercial over to residential is, again, now that starts to cause issues. What I'd like to do is, like everybody else, sit down and work through a list of what things are allowed rather than just leave things out there for people to guess at what is allowed and what isn't. Because then it's up to the... Rather than it be the discretion of any of the five of us up here, it should be in our charter and in our rules and regulations what you're allowed to use there and what you're not. And whether we have to make a full-fledged list of what is allowed, you remove that could be or possibly, and I like to be more definitive so that people know yay-yay or no-no. So, that's where I'm at with that.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's pause for a second and have a motion to extend the time. And I would recommend to 11:30, and if we don't need it... recommend to 11:30, and if we don't need it, we don't need it. Motion to extend to 11:30.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Kuyas.
I, I love the direction we're going, thank you, Renee, thank the planning department for working on this stuff. I believe it's, you know, the residents have pushed us to help get these topics addressed. I do agree with Commissioner Carr, I think that Pappas building property is special. I think it needs to have a little bit different zoning to hopefully invite some type of redevelopment of the property, and it could be a spot that's separate from the rest, you know, but I, I'd like to get that out there. The, the food trucks, I, I know we've stated, just try to keep them away from the Sponge Docks. I haven't consulted with the, the downtown business owners yet, so I'm not sure how they feel. Annexation, guys, it's, whether we call it a loophole or just part of the process, it's, it's happening, and I, I'd hate to see us not be able to annex properties because of the, you know, because of this situation and layout from being able to convert from the county to the, to the city, but that's just me, so I just wanted to get that out there, and thank you for everything everyone's doing.
I, City Manager Ms. Vincent and I have had numerous conversations, I, I think the idea is that there's been a number of concerns expressed by residents and everything, and, and you're hearing the commission here, so what I need now is a motion, it's the eight items, is that correct, Ms. Vincent?
Correct.
If we could have a motion to authorize the staff to proceed with the eight items as described by Ms. Vincent this evening, and a second.
Motion to what the mayor just said.
Motion to approve board direction on the eight items on the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan interim amendments.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. All right, the next item is the Sister City Invitation to Egena. I'm gonna be abstaining from voting on this under Florida Statute 286.012, where there appears to be a possible conflict of interest, and the vice mayor's gonna handle this item. And I just want to simply say, and, and why, in Tarpon Springs, it would appear as a conflict of interest, since not only does my family come from Egena, but also so does the city managers, and also Mr. George Protos, who is a friend of mine, the Mutsas family, who are friends of mine, and of course, Les Watzasanos, whose father was my father's best friend. And there's a perception of aggrandizement by my participating in this, and then later, perhaps being the ceremonial representative for the city at the twinning ceremonies in Egena. So, let me turn this over to Mr. Lund, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lund.
I don't think I need the gavel.
You need the gavel. Pass the gavel.
Thanks. Okay, so, we're, we're here to discuss the Sister City application, or at least discuss the Sister, Sister City invitation to a, to a Genoa Greece, and, and Mayor Vaticiotes just explained why he was recusing himself. I'd like to give a little bit of background. We've been working on this since February of 2020. At that time, we got a first letter from the mayor of Agina requesting, requesting twinning, and that went to Mayor Alahouzis. Later on that year, somewhere in August, Chris Alahouzis responded to the mayor, saying that he, you know, needed to refer this to the Sister Cities Committee, and it was kind of dropped at that particular point. Earlier this year in May, there was another letter sent from Mayor Zorbas, who's the mayor for Agina, re-requesting twinning, basically, and introducing himself. A couple of days later, there was a letter from Mayor Vaticiotes of referring again to the Sister Cities Application Committee, and, you know, there was some other stuff in there explaining that his family was from Agina, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so we know about that. In June, the Sister Cities came up and said, "Yes, we agreed to twin," you know, and, and wanted to do an exchange program for 2023. There's probably a question of budget, I think we have $15,000 in our twinning budget, so I'm not sure how far that's gonna get us into an exchange program. At any rate, Sister Cities went ahead on July 27th and issued a formal invitation to twin with the, so it's kinda before our decision. So, the decision here is, we have seven Sister Cities right now. I don't even know why we would want another eight, except for it's, you know, to get a ninth or a tenth, or when does it stop? But I think in this particular instance, our hands are tied, because the Sister, Sister Cities already sent a formal invitation to the mayor of Agina. So, that ends my comments on this. Is there any comments from the public on this?
Anita Protos, 901 Bay Shore Drive. It's pronounced Aenah, not Agina.
I'm sorry.
They're gonna think you're from Texas.
I.
Aenah.
Aenah, okay.
And really, the mayor shouldn't have to accuse himself, he's an American citizen, he was born in America, it's his strong heritage, and I really feel you have a right to vote. I voted on him, and we need it. You need to understand, Tarpon Springs is the melting pot of Greece and America. We are the only community in the United States that has a representation of all the 12 Vodaknisa Islands and the mountainous areas of Greece. And the reason I know that is because Dr. Monahan and I worked for two and a half, maybe three years, when they used to only take one country or one city. And when we explained it to them and went and talked to the board, and they came and talked to us, they finally consented to let Tarpon Springs have all the Vodaknisa Islands and the mountainous areas of Greece. So that's why we have to have it. And if you don't vote for it, you're gonna be haunted by the Greek community, and you don't want that. And that's no threat. And Chris wouldn't do it, because he wanted Kalimos. Everything was Kalimos. And I fought bitterly with him on that. The city manager's great-great-great-grandfather, and my husband was, was a brother, his one bro, the priest married a La Course girl, how many hundreds of years ago? And they were both priests in Aenah. And we have a famous bishop from there, just like they do in Kalimos, they do in all the other islands. So that's why you want it, because of the richness of this community. We're all proud to be Americans, our families came over here for a better life and to educate their children, but they're all proud of their islands. And you see it at Epiphany, and you see it in the Greek Independence Day Parade. And we're the only community, and I'll tell you again, that has all the traditions and keeps the traditions, even our church services, our cathedral is still in the old ways, and people come from all over the world to see this. So that's why we want to have every island that we can get in the sister program for Tarpon Springs. And all over the United States, where they envy us, the Greek communities, for what we have here. Go read the National Herald newspaper at the library, the English one, and you'll find out. And that's what I want to tell you. I'm an American, but I'm proud of my Greek heritage, I'm proud of my ancestors. They came and they gave their sons to protect America, they sent their children to Greece, I mean, to college, they sent them back to Greece, some of them, to get wives and bring them back or get husbands, but they were, they became proud Americans and they did very well. Krispy Kreme doughnuts, Greek man. Coney Allen hot dog chili sauce, a Greek man. Wendy's, the man was adopted, he was Greek, and he founded Wendy's. You can go, Bunny Blue Bread. You can go on and on, what the Greeks have accomplished. They had the first big candy stores in Chicago. Read the Greek history of what they've accomplished, and you'll see it in the Greek National Herald, and then you'll understand why we want it. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
That one was long enough.
Jack, is there anybody online that would like to comment?
Anyone online would like to comment on this item, please, Mr. Hen, you'd be allowed in. And we do not have any race against its terms.
Thank you. I'm gonna open this up to Commissioner comment.
Is it okay, Vice Mayor, if I say something first?
Absolutely.
I know I'm prejudiced, too, and we're gonna have to worry about the tabloids in the morning, saying the mayor and I are related, so we'll deal with the tabloids there, but I think a lot of the confusion, we've got, and we're working with, the Sister City Committee has been in essence for six years, was, was running already by Commissioner Alahouzis. Before that, Mayor Valeris ran it for a long time. They are just getting into a situation where they're doing it on their own without the leadership, so we have to work with them. I think that, that's an explanation for the premature, send the letter before sending it to the board, that they'd like to, and getting board approval to, and then sending it. So I think the confusion, we've got a brand-new people, they've never had to operate that board for six years, the former mayor was the head and going, and, and dealing with them and kinda directing them on this board, so we're working with them on procedures, everything else. And the mention of the, the connection with the school and stuff, that, that's really outside of this, all, all we're talking about is, is the Sister City. And the reason it was put back, we had the two cities, the last two cities we did, we had them going, and the comedians, them kind of assumed that, that Aenah was gonna come after, after those two, because they were already in the process, that adding another one coming afterwards, so, so that's kinda how the confusion, the letter coming out a little bit, but it was intended to do, and, and again, we're working with the Sister City Committee procedure-wise and proper things, and, and we'll get that, that going together. So I just want to add that to why some of the confusion, the order, they had very good intentions, they didn't mean, they didn't mean to send it in advance, so, but it's a learning process for them, and we're working with them to learn the process.
Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I, I think you made, Vice Mayor made a comment about, we kinda have to do it because they sent the letter already, so, I mean, we still have the right to say yes or no. I, I have no issue, I'm happy to accept every Sister City application that wants to come before us from Greece. There's different culture, different heritage, and different portions of Greece. I'm not Greek that I'm aware of, but I've got a lot of Greek friends, so I, I know it's as, as much culture as we can embrace from the, the Greek islands and different parts of Greece, I'm happy to, to do that and support it.
Omoa? Yes, I also for this, you know, I don't know where it stops, where, you know, how many Sister Cities we should have, and that could be a discussion at another type, another time, but right now, you know, I, I enjoy meeting people, I enjoy talking to different cultures, I don't think I've met anybody that I don't like speaking to, so for me, it's very nice. I, I enjoyed the last visit that we had, and I look forward to meeting and greeting people to our wonderful city, so I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuyas?
This is just very important, through just the, the history of Tarpon Springs and some of the settlers being from Aenah, some of the first travelers over, so I do think we need to be selective on future twinnings, that's, there's no doubt about that, and we need to reinforce and strengthen the, the relationships we currently have, but I'm all for, I don't think the mayor should have accused himself, but I completely understand, you know, and, yeah, I think we support it, we, let's get this twinning going and be, you know, be selective on how we try to grow an organic relationship with our current and potential future cities. Thank you.
And just for the record, I didn't mean to be deprecative of my explanation, I just wanted to explain what I knew about the whole situation, that was it, so. Here, can we have a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, thank you, Vice Mayor Lund, item 19, settlement of code enforcement lien, sub-14 North Avenue, City Attorney Trask.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet is a memorandum from me, the memorandum is bringing to your attention that we've received an offer for settlement of the lien at 614 North Avenue. This is a code enforcement lien that was incurred as a directory, in, in 2019, as a direct result of in-op vehicles being on the property, the operation of a business without a local business tax receipt formerly known as an occupational license, and using residential property for the business of car sales. Property did take a little bit of time to come into compliance. The issues relative to that were related to you in an email that I provided to you with the letter from one of the property owners, so I want you to include that in your, your review of this particular issue, but, so, the property owner has offered $1,000, we believe that will cost, cover the costs incurred in this case, there is an outstanding code enforcement lien, roughly $61,000, so it would be settlement of that $61,000 lien for $1,000. Both the city manager and the code enforcement department are in agreement with this recommendation to accept the offer of settlement at $1,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Let's go to public comments, get that out of the way, are there any other public comments on this? Any public comments? IT, any public comments? Remote access? I'll assume that's none. Let's go to Commissioner comments, Vice Mayor Lund, anything?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Carr?
None.
Commissioner Eisner?
No comment, Mayor.
I, I don't have any, I've spoke to the city manager about this earlier, and I, I know the family and the circumstance, so let's have a second, and I'm sorry, a motion and a second.
Motion to approve for $1,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last item, item 20, approve revision to cemetery rules. Basically, we had gotten a request from, I guess, through the Historical Society or a few of their senior members, there if you will, for Ms. Jane Whitcomb, who is at our Cycladius Cemetery without a grave marker, and she's a historic figure here in Tarpon Springs, and they were requesting a, a, basically authorization to put a grave marker, a headstone at her site, and we did not have a provision for doing that, so there's a modification in the cemetery rules that, I'm gonna stop there, I'm gonna turn it over to, it's, it's a combination of the city attorney, city clerk, and the city manager, so I, City Attorney Trask, would you like to do it?
Yeah, I would be happy to. So, hopefully you've got in your packet the highlighted version, which is the addition of item number three under Article 13, which is the monuments, memorials, markers, and benches provision. In reviewing this with the city manager and the city clerk, we wanted to obviously provide you with this language, some ability to provide for monuments or markers, but we wanted to make sure that there was significant, that was substantive information rather relative to the historical significance of the person who was buried in the grave site, and so the suggestion was to have And so the suggestion was to have whoever the requister is for the marker of the monument to provide documentation reflecting the historical significance of the deceased person, that the requister is a five oh one C three organization that concentrates its efforts in historical matters such as the Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society, and that the requister provides documentation that confirms that there are no known living family members of the deceased person. Once that information would be provided, and the city manager determines that it meets the requirements, then he would authorize the city clerk to provide for the installation of the marker of the monument. The marker or monument would be limited to the information that was similar to the information in the gravesite, where there was not a probated will. That's section number two up above in the rule. And that would mean that they would have the following information on the marker or the monument, the name of the person, date of birth, date of death, birthplace, and the city where the decedent is from. And it's my understanding that the mayor has added one additional suggestion, and that is, is that there be a brief explanation or description of the historical significance can also be on the monument. So with that, if this provision as written is acceptable, it would be, it would require a motion to approve, and then it would become a part of your Cycladia Cemetery rules in the future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know the city clerk and the city manager have comments on this probably, too.
Let me, if I may add, on the, on that blue item that was added, I think you've got those copies in front of you where it says, and a brief explanation of description of the historical significance. That came in as a recommendation from one of the Historical Society members. I had some conversations, no, no, that's okay.
I thought it came from you, Mayor.
The only comment I had, and I had conversations with the city clerk and city manager this morning, the problem I'm having is a brief explanation description. I think we need to simplify it and the historical. It would be the name, date of birth, date of death, birthplace, and the city where the descendant is from, and the historical significance. Keep it simple, so we don't get into any kind of a description and narrative and things like that, and that would be subject to approval. I believe it, as we're showing it here, to the city manager, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just a simple historical significance, and then that would be up to him. And the problem is, if you get into the first so-and-so in Tarpon Springs, then some other five oh one C three comes up with their first so-and-so in Tarpon Springs, and that's what we don't want to happen, if some language is approved on a headstone. Vice Mayor Lunt, any questions?
My only question when I looked through this was, and I wrote it down, is why was there no mention of the historical significance? So that's been covered, so I'm fine.
Right. Commissioner Carr.
How in the world did this come about, that somebody knew that there wasn't a headstone on this person's gravesite?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How did this come about? Like, who brought this forward initially? Was it the Historical Society?
Actually, it came in from the Historical Society for Ms. Jane Whitcomb that's out there, and it actually predates me. I was just asked about it, and I think it may have, did it come into your office, or I?
It was just currently at our office, but when we changed the rules the last time, it only included if it was from a surviving spouse, a child, a mother or father, brother or sister. So the Historical Society wouldn't have been allowed to place a monument.
No, it's just, it's interesting that someone knows exactly where this person is and that it's there. So I'm happy for it. I'm in full support of it.
Who, the person that we're talking about, the historical figure?
Yeah.
It's Ms. Jane Whitcomb, who was a doctor here, and was also the wife, if I've got this right, of our first city clerk, I think, in Tarpon Springs. And I can't remember Mr. Whitcomb's first name, but Whitcomb Bayou.
Yeah, right. It's a pretty prominent one, right? So just to be clear, I'm just happy that someone knows that she was buried there, and that there needs to be some type of recognition there. I'm in full support of recognizing more historic monuments or markers anywhere in the city, if it's cemeteries, or in front of an old sponge house that's not there anymore, and it could be apartments now, or something, anything along this line, so.
I suspect there's more, so. Commissioner Eisner, you had none. Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Kuyas, none. Okay, I'm done. I don't have anything else.
I'm making motion to approve.
Public comments, we didn't have any public comments. Did I go to public comments? Yes, we didn't have any. Okay, let's have a motion.
Motion approved.
In a second.
You got a motion down here, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we got it. Roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, that ends the agenda. Let's go to, let's see, we've got board and staff comments. Major Trill.
Tomorrow, back to school. Pay attention to the children walking, riding bikes, crossing streets. Make sure you stop at stop signs so they can cross. And make sure you pay attention to your speed in the speed zone, because we'll be out there.
You'll be out there?
We will be out there.
Good for you.
Making sure the children are safe on their first day of school.
Thank you. City Attorney Trask.
Nothing, thank you very much.
City Manager Lacouris.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk Jacobs.
I have no comment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, safe travels to the commissioners who are traveling this week to represent the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner? Just something quick. We had items in the consent agenda today, six, seven, eight, and nine, and all I say is, I want you to keep tabs on how much extra we're spending, you know, whenever we get these items in for a trailer, or a new this, or a new that. It's not, can we afford that? It's, can we afford that plus all the maintenance? And then the maintenance winds up going double and triple. So just to keep it in tab, I mean, we own it, we have to service it, but we really should be very careful. It's not whether you can afford the boat, it's whether you can afford the upkeep of the boat. And that's what I, we really have to watch the dollar on all of these items to really make sure that the purchase is of value to the city. That's it. Thank you. Commissioner Kuyas?
A lot of items discussed tonight, very productive meeting. Thank you.
It was a long meeting. What I wanted to get, once we get the budget out of the way and the strategic plan, we're going to kind of go into this area the time before the holidays, and then we can kind of get into more of the policy things that you're describing. Right now, it's extremely hectic with everything that's going on, and it's, and it's just, you know, just accept what the staff is taking, ask questions, but accept it, and then if there's an issue with it, we just change the policy at a later date, and that way we don't blindside them if they were counting on something and we turn them down, you know, for example, anyway. So I, there's a number of things, but it's too late for me to think through these this evening, so if I need to, I'll send you a memorandum through the city manager. But that's all I have this evening. Meeting adjourned at eleven twenty-five.